Mr. Taylor, did you even pledge?
Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everyone has an...
I mean, if there was enough on there, you could...
Agenda from them?
No, no.
Do you need to do any changes or additions to the agenda? Is there any changes or additions to the agenda?
Can we put in the old business election this little bit about human resources and...
Are there any other changes or additions to the agenda? There is being a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Second. That motion probably set me to approve the agenda as amended. Discussion. Hearing that, all those who favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carried.
Yeah, we just added under old business, we added HR.
Okay. Since God put you down, we will go back on to the content of the agenda.
Where is the HR under? Becky, where's HR under? Is it the third item? Wherever.
Is Michael going to be joining us today?
Yeah, eventually. Will you take your mic?
Yep.
Dusty. You hear me, Jim?
What?
All right. Next up is the consent agenda. What is the pleasure on that? We do have Joe Wood here, who's run the explanation on resolution 23-2.
So, this is just, because we had a liquor license come up and it was given to the Tahuaka. They now have to build an area designated just for the sale of the liquor. And they have to have a separate cash register and no one under the age of 21 can be allowed in that area. And so the conference just had to do a resolution for that. Back in 2017, the commissioner did not have to do that because all of our liquor licenses were just manuals at the time. So that's why I'm returning this now.
Yeah, and actually, it wasn't given to them, it was transferred to them.
Well, it was one that came up, so they were, the board, they had to apply for it and the commissioners gave that one.
No new license transfer of old from a...
Well, the only time it's transferred is when someone purchased the building that the license is associated with. Then it's transferred. This is a new license application and they are now the ones that have that license. So it's only transferred when it's transferred with the application.
And this is for who?
Uh, the Tahuaka. Uh, they...
Down there. Hey Garrett, do you have the...
Yes.
You bear a look at him ready?
Yes.
What's the pleasure on the consent agenda?
Motion, yeah.
One second. We have a motion, property secretary, who can do consent agenda as presented. Ready discussion? Hearing that, all those who favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carried.
What is the NAV AID?
That is maintenance agreements with DOT on the airport. That's, uh, the total, it's an 80-20 match grant with DOT on that. The total on that is 7450. Then the 20% of that is resupplied from the city county.
Okay.
The county's cost is like $594. With some of the maintenance stuff for the planes.
Greg.
Wow.
Michael.
Here.
How are you?
I don't know. I don't have that on. Two hundred.
Yes, sir.
Just wrap it around and tie it.
You can use this.
Yeah.
Jim? You want Jimmin?
Jim?
You want Jimmin?
You get a... I need my...
From back there.
It's one of those two events. I'm coming to see the trip guys.
Get that airside contract.
Maintenance agreement. I could sign this. Coming to you probably next.
Morning Scott. How you doing?
Good, good chat.
Doing well.
Good.
Missed all the action.
Do whatever you have to do.
The vouchers.
Yeah.
Explosions, chasing, everything was amazing.
We did have a third act at this point, didn't we? On and off those horses. You watch your movies or what? You could have made it on.
And...
Action. I want more smoke.
Really? Bomb abuse.
He's very smoking.
Yeah. Last sign. There you go. Back there, move on. Road bridge. All right, next up here is the advancement with road bridge.
You know, had two mines go down, turned on one on one. One of the cats can follow respond on it. I'm sure it's a lot of filter. We have those non-terrified events, so I think it probably can just carry. Instead on those engines, the can followers stand that you can practice a walk. So, we'll get it one each way, spend all training and all such a lot of cat. Couldn't really give us the price in the early 20th century, so the last whole race answer was 53,000. Basically, finally common on these ends, about 7,000 hours. This place got like 400. Careful, I guess it's something like that. So it was not far from here.
Sammy, I may offer you blades, we got... As I have warning.
Five right now, not the one that's terrible in time, it's going to be the next one.
Turbo, I know we didn't have, did you have any metal and oil on that one?
No. I did meet with the guys from Allen Burton. And now, so we worry everything, don't they, Biden?
Easy ramp so far. Where was that boy, was that boy stationed, the one that you got candy issues with?
Four corners.
Four corners?
I brought the...
Oh.
I brought some before and after pictures.
What road is this on?
What's your road?
I have a comment, I expect it to happen with the others. You do it. If there's John here, you can have it. It's something highly common with...
Start. Tell them for your work, we've got 3,000 hours on it.
Pretty good.
You got some... Put the gravel on it, see if you guys stop stop.
On the, uh, on the bark road up there, now it's year, if it's done, what's our next step on that? Yeah. Once it, the last job is, what does it run, do like a mile or max, right?
Just for quality and matches, it's gonna be a mile.
Fuck up there. That's no problem. Paint gravel, let it gravel put down. We have two macro projects and it works for this time.
Am I, do we need to have a public hearing? Proceed, is that the next step, in proceeding that county road?
Yeah. Justice Board, if they want to continue proceeding with making that county road. If the board wants to, then we need to have a year of report on through the public hearing, moving forward.
If you're not officially starting public hearing, go ahead and have it.
Give a time and day, second public hearing, advertise it. If there's enough public interest, then we decide if we want to move forward or not.
Have to advertise, especially in the public hearing.
I understand.
Faces red dense and land is landlocked.
Yeah.
They can't get clear the, uh, type of insurance on it because there's actually not a designated public road to it. So.
What, what's going on with the border service?
My take on it was, they're, the only thing that they're upset about, legit, is somebody came in there and did their work without giving fire through. And that's kind of shy of cleaning up the, a couple of piles, there's, I drove out, I can look at it, and it's not bad, there's two or three piles of brush. Um, they want that cleaned up, and I think as far as creating a public road, I'd consider unusual. At least, that's, so.
Yes, my understanding too, we have to, we'll have to an M O U to maintain that road, this border service, if it won't maintain, we'll have to maintain that section on the road service. Is that what your take on proceeding?
So. I don't have time to do it, but the next thing is, uh.
I'm looking at.
Sure, off to the first week of March.
Yeah.
I'm looking at my, that guy, I drew up. Second needs to be a survey.
That'd be the step after, so, I see.
Yeah, I'm just double checking.
So, to help you understand, is it, am I only have extension of Barton Road, you split that?
Probably, the roads are pretty much failed, they could be more susceptible indoor. Jimmy may do some stuff to. But it would look like it's probably expensive, what you have.
Basically, it'd be extending Barton Road a mile and a half to the Crisp County line. Would be a good way to put it, public, but, yeah. First, yeah, in March.
Four, ten thirty, two thousand, ten.
Looks like the, the survey needs to be done.
Prior to this?
Yeah. Just double checking this thing, so then, when it's, when the notice is published, you can, it can be described what's, you know, what's happening.
Somebody gave reach out to the. I assume that falls on the, I don't know, it's one of them.
Says the. The cap shall cause the county surveyor.
So we have so many times to really fill that cavity.
Yeah, well, you're setting it for. We denied it.
Right, we just reached out to the public. Yeah, it's kind of a catch twenty-two, there's, you do a public comment first, and then if there's no comment, if there's no interest in it, then why do you survey?
I think that would be, I agree with that.
Did it say, do we have, that's that's the steps we have to take to do that, or?
Yeah, says the survey's next, so then we make, uh, publish it in the paper, you know, you have a specific, you have a specific description of where it's going. Now maybe, maybe, I don't think it hurts to have a public hearing beforehand, just to feel it out, and then it's, or a public comment or whatever beforehand. And then if, if everything sounds good, then do the survey, and then have the formal hearing after.
Contingent on the survey.
If it's a former service road, there should already be a survey.
Problem is, it's only a half a mile of course, not at all. And there was, there is new pins up there right now, so they're having a recent survey, but I'm not that confident. So I don't think it costs very much.
So, I'm gonna have to give, you got surveyors, keep that survey in. Could you, you want to use, or? Very much. Thank you very much, thank you.
Do we need a county surveyor? As, as a county surveyor?
No, we all, all our surveys, we've only outsourced them to.
I'm already understanding that we need a county surveyor, though. We do not?
So.
Yeah, we never got, we never got, we never helped, you know, okay, well, let's move away from that. Anytime that survey's quit, just contract it out. I'm sure they have all their license and insurance there, we have to be up current before we do it, but use them. What's the board's plan, if you want to have?
Well, I'm, I'm in the same boat too, I mean, if we do the surveying, and it's not of your interest, I mean, I'm assuming it probably will be, but I don't know, we should assume that either. It's out to the public, and, oh, sorry.
No, it's, it's, it's an extra step, but I think it would make more sense to have public comments, public opinion. If that looks positive, then do the survey, then do your official hearing. It's, it's one more meeting, but it would save us money, if, if there's no interest in it, it, then it saves, it saves us that money.
So we would need to advertise as you're accepting public comment, or might have extension part.
Right, not, not, not the actual hearing, just public comment.
The, and I think we can define it pretty well, because that forest service road is already defined as a, as a road. So it'd be extending the county road from Mandapart, you know, do north along the next county road, or whatever the forest service road is. So, and then do, do north along the property line to, to Mandapart County line, so I think you can define it pretty well, the public can understand what it is, and we have. Then, if it's, people want to do it, then.
We'll head and start surveying, and then, yeah, upcoming.
So then, we can tell you what the next thing is, that's not public.
Yeah, we're, we're not doing a public hearing, we just advertising for public comment, or we keep up the going. Yeah.
Before the survey.
What?
Before the survey.
Yeah. And we're not doing a public hearing, we're just getting public comments. Not a formal hearing.
Need a vote on that?
That was good promotion, I would actually official.
I know that we, uh, contact the community, we can call them, um, of our intentions of extending Barton Road, the mile and a half to Crisp County contingent upon, uh, surveying.
Second. Have a motion, public statement to advertise public comments extending the Barton Road to the Forest Service, a mile and a half to the Crisp County line. Any other discussion? Hearing that all in favor, if they say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Also say aye. Do that. Anything else? Anything else, Jimmy?
Uh, you got any suggestions on this one forty M, I mean, with the hours and whatnot? If we need an engine on that, is it working, they're building, mechanically, is it? Weird question, mechanically, how is it other than the engine?
What is it?
Thanks, Jimmy. I think there's enough extra. Christie left me a new prevention specialist. So, um, what I have as a handout for, for you all, is just, um, W D H's version of our highlights from the last fiscal year. Um, we just, I just got this from him a couple of weeks ago, so I thought I would share it with you, um, if we could just give you another update. Um, just the budget summary, we turned back twenty-three cents to the Department of Health of the two hundred and eighty thousand, eight hundred and forty-three dollars. Um, just couldn't get it to zero, a lot, twenty percent, let's, let's say.
Hell, yeah. More than that.
I know, right, like, I was like, I was like, um, so, just about twenty percent of our, um, money was, uh, suicide prevention, twenty, was twenty-three percent, and then ninety percent we put into tobacco prevention, and then about, um, just over fifty-eight percent we put into just general substances prevention, so that includes, um, underage, um, alcohol, um, adult overconsumption of alcohol, marijuana, um, in THC, and then opioids and, and other drugs, whatever else it is that, um, comes up on our rate. So that's just kind of the down and clarity, um, there's some highlights on there, um, in District One, we were doing the in-depth nicotine cessation program with students who got caught waiting on school grounds, and they had to, um, complete some kind of education program, so we gave that a try, um, wasn't, I, it worked okay, but it wasn't great, so we're trying something different now, um, we're doing some motivational interviewing, and we're doing that in both districts, so just to the department school with a student in District Seven, and then, um, has some on the, on the books to do with District One as well. Um, as far as our suicide prevention goes, we have three trainings that we're, um, that we're really focusing on, mental health first aid, um, I'm actually trained as an adult's mental health first aid trainer, and a youth mental health first aid trainer now, so we're offering those trainees, um, which is a full-day training, it really focuses on mental health, not just suicide prevention. Um, the Safe Talk training that we have thirty-nine community members trained in, um, we actually trained all of District Seven staff as part of a staff development day, so that's where those numbers came from, um, and that's more like, it's like a four-hour kind of introductory gatekeeper training, we call it, and then, um, the assist training at the very bottom there, the twenty-one, um, that's a two-day intensive intervention, suicide intervention training that we do, we usually do that once a year. So, we have, um, now health, adult mental health first aid, Safe Talk, and assist trainings all on the books for, um, March and April as well, so those trainings are available to community members, um, who would be interested in taking them, and then sending that information out on our lister. Um, it'll also go out in our constant contact meetings, like we have to go out here probably next week. And then, our sources of strength is kind of our, um, probably our, our biggest push, and that's because it is that true upstream prevention, and it hits, um, more kids, it hits more community members, so, um, maybe then they'll just see the numbers, um, that's happening in both districts, um, District One is just high school, District Seven is middle school and high school, and they are also interested in elementary school for the next four years, so we're getting all of the students here. Um, right now, our focus is on THC and high potent C, uh, high potent C THC's, and headache THC, and marijuana cannabis, just because of, um, the, the amount we're seeing, um, and that law enforcement is sharing issues that they're having, so that's kind of our focus right now, is educating, um, the community and parents, caregivers, um, on the effects of that high potent C THC, the Delta Eight, the Delta Nine, Delta Tens, um, even though they are legal because of the hemp and the Farm Bill, they're still not, it's, it's still not, it's, so that's really kind of our message right now. Um, and then we also, um, are working with Department Health, just looking at that opioid excitement funds, so, um, I'm not sure where the, what the board's, um, kind of position is in looking at those, those funds that we're going to be getting, um, but I think that's a conversation that really needs to be. My, from my perspective, bring people to the table and have a conversation about what we can do with that little bit of money we're going to get, um, as it stands today, what I have, Wyoming's supposed to get fifty-two million dollars, and we get a whole point seven, eight percent of that, so not even a full percent, um, so my basic math says we get like forty thousand five hundred and sixty dollars of that money, um, the latest that I've heard is that because we're getting more than seventy-five hundred dollars, they're going to take that forty thousand and divide it out over eighteen years, so, yeah, I think, it's like, it's like insanity, I don't, that's the last I heard when I was at, um, in D C last week, so we're looking at like twenty-two fifty a year, so it's really like a drop in the bucket, but, um, there are some guidelines that we have to, you know, follow to utilize that money, and all of those kind of things, so, um, I'm not sure where the direction or, um, where that will be going, but that's also on there.
As, who are you reaching out, give us, we have, for you, positive feedback from?
You know, um, I would say that District Seven, um, the, the students in, um, in Upton have like latched on, their students and staff have just like sucked up sources of strength, and they are going like guns ablazing, which is pretty cool. Um, next week, they're partnering, next week's Valentine's Day, yeah, next Tuesday, they're partnering with, um, F F A, and they're doing a, um, self-care kind of thing, where they're having lunch, and they're, they're doing all different kinds of sessions, where all of the high school students are going to go through those, so, um, as far as this, the tobacco part goes, that's always interesting, because once they're being busted at school, um, it's like what I, um, told the administrators, like that education piece for Virginia, if they're getting busted at school, they're past education, I mean, they're full blown addicted, because they can't make it through class period without taking a hit off their rate. And so that's why we've kind of switched to this motivational interviewing piece, um, and then trying to refer them to cessation, or help them get the quick, um, that they hopefully want, um, and I've only done that with the one student in, in District Seven so far, and he was very receptive, actually, and he set some goals, and I'll meet back with him, and so, um, I think that's a better direction than what we were going with the education piece, sure.
The I T H C stuff, is that legally purchased stuff, that's coming across border?
Um, it's not even coming across the border, it's coming from hemp shops.
So real?
So, yeah, um, yeah, because of the way the Farm Bill reads, and the way that our state statute reads, that, um, it can be, as long as it's labeled hemp, and they claim for it to be less, like, like the General Three Ten, whatever, to be purchased legally, so, a couple of really, um, scary situations that we've had, with kids ended up in the E R, um, that product was purchased legally by their parents, so. So that's the, that's the really scary part, because they think it's, like, it's legal, it's okay, so.
You hear them advertising, like, well, nobody goes eat on marijuana, like, well, the old, the old, old days where you smoked, I don't think they could, now it's so concentrated, that.
Yeah, it's, it's not Woodstock weed, for sure, and, I prefer your ground is hot, and you can't wait to get that, it's not Woodstock weed, um, no, and the part of it that's really scary is they may not overdose on it, but it causes such extremes, it can cause such extreme hallucinations and, and, um, d. it causes such extremes, it can cause such extreme hallucinations and, and, um, different variations in the body that it causes other physical effects. Thank you. You guys?
Thank you.
Yeah.
You're out, Jeff.
Okay, man, okay. Thanks, everybody, today. Okay.
Do you want to introduce yourself so people can hear?
Oh, I'm Paul Stelling, Leo Radday and Company, um, out of Casper, and we performed the audit to, of the, of the county for, I don't know, I think this is maybe the fourth year now, and I'm here to go over the financial statements in my audit, um, and I'll have copies to hand out here. Um... Is there... So I'm gonna hand two things out, is I have them to pass, and I'd like to go over everything. Um, I wanted to get up here, usually I try, I think in the past I've gotten it up to you beforehand, so we can email it out to you. I'm gonna be in, actually, your next meeting, I'm gonna be in Arizona, so, um, if, if, I'll go over today, and then if you need to get me to get on the conference call or something at the next meeting, I'll be happy to do that, and that way we can go over any questions that might come up today, and, and continue, yeah, and finish it up that way, if that's okay with everybody to do it that way in steps, and my apologies about that. But, so what I've done, I've got two things to hand out, I've got a required communication to the governing board, that they, American Institute of Certified Public Accountants say I made, um, so we do that in writing, um, and then I have, uh, an audit of financial statements, and I'll go through that, um, but you can interrupt me if you have questions at any time. Um, I think there's some new people on here, if I'm correct?
Two on the end.
Two, two on the end, okay. So I'll try to explain, it, it gets a little complex, it's not like, I don't know if you've been involved in any other financial reporting, but it's unique, government reporting's unique, um, to, compared to any not-for-profit, regular business and so on, it's not going to be the same as like when you're even doing your profit-loss on your tax return, there's certain things that, uh, each set of financial statements is trying to emphasize, and there's different ways that, uh, they're presented to emphasize, but, but it's important to that set of financial statements. And so this is our... We have the actual financial statement part, and we have the compliance part, compliance and controls part. And so, um, there's going to be separate reports in this for, for both, they're all incorporated into the same, into the same item, and so when we do an audit, we do, first of all, we start, we do a risk assessment, where things we feel are going to be more riskier transactions than others, um, so we do a risk assessment, and then we do, we do things, we contact the state, we contact the banks to make sure that what they have on their records agrees to what you have in your records, so like we'll contact DOT and make sure that the payments that you've got here agree with what DOT has, we'll contact the banks and say, is this what agrees with what the county has in the bank, is what, what you have in the bank? And then on our other parts that, we're going to do a lot of sampling, um, I can't look at every transaction, uh, that occurs within the county, uh, I mean, I'd be up here going through the same thing, but, so we're essentially looking to see if there's a system in place, a system of controls in place, where things are approved, like each, each time, each month you sign off on the warrants to pay, things like that, um, we look to see that there's support for each warrant, we look to see that the Department of Heads, uh, approve that, that payment and things like that, make sure it's within the budget, um, and then same like on the payroll, we're gonna make sure that the Department had approved the payroll, um, that it's signed off, uh, and approved to pay, and, 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 uh, and if there's any irregularities within those, okay? I, I can't, so we're actually auditing the controls, we're not actually auditing the actual transactions, if something comes to our attention during that transaction, then we, then, then we'll further investigate it and possibly have a finding or, or something else in pursuit, um, on that. So that's kind of what we do when we do our audit, um, I'll explain a little bit more as I go along on that. Um, the other thing that's came up in the past is, the past few years, we've had a huge influx of COVID money, and anytime that the county expends over $750,000 of the federal government's money, I have to do a federal audit. Um, on that, there's a little bit of, that's a little bit different this year, I'll explain that when I'm going through that, uh, on the ARPA money's treated a little bit differently, um, on that, but then the federal government comes in and says, I need to do specific procedures on their money. They, they've got certain procedures, again, it's all sample, um, they've got certain procedures that they want us to perform on the federal government's money, and certain attributes and certain things that they feel are important, and they give me a list by grant, so like if, last year we did the airport grant, um, uh, which is, that would have been for fiscal year 2021, not, that was completed by fiscal year 21, 22, but, so we, we go to the government's website, and they tell us they want us to do this on the, on the airport grant. Okay? So like on the airport grant, one of the things they want us to do is Davis Bacon monitoring, make sure that the, the contractors are paying the correct wage rate. That might not apply to, if I go to a, go to a, a school district, and I go out of a, a, a school district, they don't care about Davis Bacon. So it's what the federal government, if you're, uh, what the federal government feels is important to that specific grant is, is what we're, what we're auditing there on that, on the compliance on that. On the short item, this is my required communication to the governing board, required by the American Institute of Certified Public Accountants, just go through what we've audited, uh, go through there in the first paragraph, go through management's responsible selection, use of appropriate accounting policies, and those are described in note two of the financial statements, go through significant estimates that are, uh, used in preparation of the financial statements, go through any difficulties we had on page two, uh, disclosures that are sensitive, I, I've talked in the past about the pension benefit obligations, any difficulties we had in performing the audit, any corrected or uncorrected misstatements, okay? When, when I prepare the financial statements, these are your financial statements, they're not mine, okay? That's what you're paying me for, okay? Um, we take, and I, I need to be clear on you understand this, but I don't, everything that is included in this financial statements and these, is things that I've gathered from the county, okay? I don't, my job is to take all this information that's provided to me and put that in the form of financial statements, okay? So I'm not, I can't make anything up, I can't, everything that's in there is things that I've gotten from the county or from outside, there, there's things that I have support for on that, and so when we take the financial statements, we have three levels that we need to go through, and I'll explain these a little bit more, but, but we start with the budget information that's presented to you each month, essentially that's what we're auditing, because that's the base of what we're starting with, okay? And from there, I incorporate things that are payables or receivables, things that are owed to you, things that you owe, that builds onto the next set of financial statements. So if your, your sales tax collections are usually two-month lag, so the transaction occurred in June, you're not getting paid to it by the state until August, so the state owes you two months' worth of sales tax, because it's when the transaction occurred, okay? There's other things like you've got unpaid property taxes, okay? That are, that are uncollected, that gets incorporated into here. There's other things like you've got bills that you pay on, pay, you pay right at the start of July, but there's going to be bills that don't get captured by June 30th that need to go back in, because you owe that money, okay? So it might be approved at the August meeting, but it was for a June bill, so we have to, we have to, I, we, we incorporate those items into the next set of financial statements, and that's the financial statements that are going to focus on spending, and I'll identify those when I get to that. Then the third set of financial statements that go into the, what set of financial statements is the full accrual, and that's going to take into account all the assets of the county, and that's going to include the fixed assets, the building, the building's not in expendable form, or the, the road equipment, or the roads, they're not in spendable form, but they are an asset of the county, and that needs to be pulled into the third set of financial statements when, that are included in here, okay? So when we go through corrected and corrected misstatements, I don't have any issues with the budget information that was presented, but I am building upon that to create the, the set of financial statements based upon the information that's provided to me, okay? Does everybody understand that? If I create something that's not provided to me, um, I've essentially violated my independence, and I can't perform an audit, I've had a failed audit. Okay? Does that all make sense on that? Okay? Uh, go through any disagreements with management, uh, I'll have Becky sign the management representation letter, when we're all complete with everything, um, if you have any issues with any findings that I come up with, you're entitled to a second opinion, they're at the bottom of, uh, the page two, top of page three, um, there, other, other, um, other findings or issues, a lot of times I get calls, every client I got, I get calls, especially this time of year, something, a question on a W2, or 1099, or book team item, and things like that, I, that, that communication goes back and forth, that I don't feel that every time I get a call, I mean, I'd be up here at every meeting, I mean, not every meeting, but I'd be someplace every meeting, you know, that saying, uh, the treasurer's office or the clerk's office called me on something, and, and it's just my discretion what I feel needs to be brought to the attention of the governing board on that, on that communication. Um, and then the other items there, um, I'm not required to report, issue an opinion on all, all things included in the financial statements, but essentially, I audit everything because I have to start with that base on that. So that's my required communication to the governing board. Is there any questions on any of that? Okay, on the financial statements, and if you turn to the table of contents, is it, just turn over the first page there? And I've got these numbered, so, so the green items are essentially the financial statements down the side, and the yellow items that maybe didn't come through on the side very well, that's the compliance, that's the internal control compliance with laws and regulations, okay? On that, so there's two parts, like I said, there's two parts to our audit. Now, when I report on your compliance with laws and regulations and your controls, I have to report on what I feel are material to the preparation of the financial statements, okay? So there might be something, you know, something real immaterial that really doesn't affect the financial statements, I don't have to report, I don't have to, or if there's some, some transaction class that really is not significant to the financial statements, I don't have to report on that, okay? And then, so on one, on the greens, the first, I was discussing the first item there, number one, this is my base, this is the base of the financial statements, that's the budgetary information, that's page 43, 44, 45, that's what's presented to you monthly by, by Becky and by Suzie. My next step is the spending focus, this is the financial statements, and that's the red, the pink item, number two, and these financial statements are focusing on spending. How did we spend it? Where did it come from? Where did it come from? How did we spend it? What do we have left to spend? And what revenue stream did it come through? Because there's things in those, because it's going to focus on revenue streams, because you've got things in the county road fund that you cannot pay the sheriff with, okay? So it's focusing on restrictions, so, so when I say revenue streams, that means that it's restricted as to what it can be spent on. Things like the library can only be spent on the library, okay? Or the, you know, or there's grants that you get, like the ARPA money can only be spent on certain ARPA things, okay? On that, so that's focusing on the revenue streams there. And then the third set, the number three, there, that's an entity-wide set of financial statements, and that's going to incorporate everything in the county, that's going to incorporate just all resources, just not spendable resources, okay? So that's going to incorporate the buildings, uh, you know, airport taxi lanes, airport runways, road, road equipment, office equipment, and everything, okay, on that, so that's going to take in and incorporate everything on that. Uh, and then on the other side, on the compliance items, number four, is our compliance with laws and regulations, every audit that I perform for the state of Wyoming has to have this report in it, it's going to be your report on compliance with laws and regulations to all money of the county, so it's going to be like, did you have a budget over expenditure, okay? Or did, um, you know, was your deposits not fully insured, or did you make an investment that goes against the state statute, okay? On that. And then number five, this is new this year, and this is, in the past, every time you spent over $750,000 of federal money, and I'd have to have the similar type of report on your compliance and laws and regulations with the federal money. This year, the, the county, the, the, the county federal money was going to be, ended up being about $600,000, okay? And so I wasn't, didn't meet that threshold, the county didn't meet that threshold, but then you spent the ARPA money for the new CADs, for the new, uh, E911, and so there was a special provision with ARPA money that if, if you normally would have to have a federal audit, but the ARPA money puts you over, we could do a, uh, this type of engagement, okay? And it, and so, so we're reporting just directly on the, on the ARPA money, and it made sense to do it that way, because you only had two ARPA expenditures, you only wrote two checks for ARPA, I think there's, and I think they're both to the same Motorola and maybe one other small one, so there was only two, two checks for the ARPA money this year, so we, this, this, um, this streamlined things a little bit to do it this way, rather than doing the full federal audit, okay? And then on number six, we have to report on our, our findings, and then the status of prior year findings. And within all these sets of financial statements, there's reconciliations, the balance from one to the next and so on, and then we supplement those with the footnotes, and, uh, and supporting schedules and so on. Okay, page one, two, and three is my auditor's report. It just, it starts out real quick there, I'll just, on page one, our opinion, that we believe these present fairly the results of operations and the financial position of the county for the year ended June 30 of 2022, goes through the basis for our opinion, and then it goes through management's responsibility, my responsibility, and then the supplemental schedules. Then on page, page six through nine, it's the management discussion analysis, just goes through the, just kind of a summary of the financial statements, okay? Um, try to, try to explain what goes into each set of financial statements. Try to, try to explain what goes into each set of financial statements. Then on page ten, statement in that position, now this is the balance sheet for everything. Does everybody find page ten okay? And this is the balance, so this is essentially the balance sheet for everything. So we have the entire county is in the first column, and then we have the peripheral units to the right. So we have the county library, county fair, and the solid waste, and, and if, and if the weed and pest did have an audit, I would incorporate the weed and the pest audit into this. Weed and pest is not required to have an audit under state statutes, so they don't have, they don't have an audit, um, so that's, I can't incorporate it. It's hard to incorporate audited information with non-audited information. Okay, I highlighted a couple things in there, the receivables are going to be the taxes, uh, that's primarily the taxes receivable, and so, so since the 22 levy is included, has been levied by the end of the year, we have to put it in as a receivable, we back it out back down at the bottom. So there's other receivables in there, the capital assets, I highlighted they're in yellow, and again, these are the items that are in non-spendable form, so they won't be included in the next set of financial statements. That's going to be the depreciated value of the buildings, uh, uh, roads and so on that I've explained. And the other item that I've included there is the non-current liabilities, and primarily that's going to be the, the, as I've explained in the past, this is going to be the liability related to the Wyoming retirement system. The Wyoming retirement system, at the end of December 21, was about 86% funded, that left a unfunded liability of about $1.5 billion. And so, um, what I have to do, or what we do, I get the information from the Wyoming retirement system, what we have to do then, when we present the financial, we have to show your portion of that based upon your percentage, take your contribution for the year, take everybody else's in the state contribution for the year, and we figure that percentage goes into your liability. Now, that liability for you includes two parts, it's going to include the public employee plan, it's going to include the law enforcement plan. So there's two parts to that, okay? On that, the law enforcement plan is a little, was been a little bit more well-funded, um, on that. And so that, that doesn't mean that the state's going to ask you to turn around and make you write a check for two, to whatever, $2 million tomorrow or anything like that, but it does affect how their, what your contributions rates are. Wasn't that long ago, you were contributing like 10 and a half percent, now it's almost 19%, 18.6 between the county and the employees, and I think you're paying all the, all the county's portion. Okay, so I mean, the, the, that's how the state was trying to shore that up by gradually increasing those contributions rates over the last five to six years on that, on that. So that's a, so it does affect you, but it's not like the state can't come around, come back and say, you need to pay $2 million tomorrow. Okay, so that, that gets included in your financial statements there. Okay, on page, page 11, um, this is, this is the income statement for the full accrual, so this includes everything, it's going to include depreciation, it's going to include the adjustment for the, for the, um, Wyoming retirement system, and here we start with the expenses in the column one in the yellow, and then what we were able to charge for those services. Okay, so, um, like health and welfare, and the health and welfare, that's going to be collections at the, at the Mallow camp or collections at the public health or whatever, okay? And then what we receive for operating grants and contributions, so that's things that the state is giving to you, or the federal government's giving to you to support, like public health, okay? And then the last item there is going to be the capital grants and contributions, and that's things that you've received, like the ARPA funds were used for the E911 system, so that goes to a capital asset, that goes to a fixed asset, that doesn't go to salaries, okay, so we break it up by that. Or like when, last year when you received the, the airport grant, that went to improvements at the airport, it didn't go to salaries, okay? So that's what, how those two columns are differentiated there. One thing I want to say about the operating grants, that is down considerably last year because last year you had all that reimbursement for all the sheriff salaries. In 2021, 2021, you had all that CARES money that went to the, the, um, went to reimburse you for all the law enforcement salaries. And then we bring that down there just on the general fund. We have to supplement those costs, as you can see, they ran negative, or they always do, and then we have to supplement that with the property taxes, sales tax, gas taxes, um, and, and so on. Then on the, the one item I highlighted there under the library, the library had quite a profit last year and, and, but a lot of that was investment earnings that were on the foundation, okay? The, the library had a lot, there was a lot of, at December, the library foundation year ends at December 31st, 21, and so there was all that gain in the market for all their investments went into the, the Wyoming Community Foundation, so they had a large, they had a large gain there. So that, that really doesn't reflect the, the profit loss of the library, it affects the profit loss of the foundation, okay, on that. That's what I wanted to cover there. On page, page 12, then we, here we start breaking it out by revenue streams, this is the balance sheet, and again, now the fixed assets are excluded, we have the general fund, the county road fund, and then I highlighted there the American Rescue Plan, that's the ARPA funds, what we had left, and, and so, um, essentially you carried over some because it didn't, you didn't spend all of it, and then, then all the other smaller funds like the, that you go through and binned it for, they're included there in the fourth column, and then there's a supplemental schedule in the back, back supplementary information for those. Okay, and then here's the profit-loss on page 14, and this is going to be just on resources spent, resources received, so it's going to be focused on the spending, and so we have the general fund, county road fund, American Rescue Plan, and then, um, all the other funds there. Okay, and then on page, the fiduciary funds, primarily on page 16, this is this money that the county treasurer collects and pays out to the school districts, the state, and so on. Then after page 16, the notes, the financial statements, go through the, what's included in, in the reporting entity, note one, note two, goes through all the, the operations and accounting policies, goes through the budget. On page 25, details the deposits and investments, so this is the county's primarily all certificates and deposit that you're holding, goes through the valuation of those, um, goes through note four, goes through what's owed to you, note five there, landfill closure costs, that's the, the waste district in Osage, note six, details all the capital assets, and that goes on for a couple pages, we start beginning balance, transfers and deletions, and then uh, goes through the long-term liabilities, towards the big liability, you really don't have any other debt, rather than what would be owed to employees in sick time or vacation if they leave, and, and then the, uh, the Wyoming retirement system liability that I disclosed. And then the last, there's long footnote regarding Wyoming retirement system, note 11, go through how all that's valued, go through the description of the plans, on that. So that's the footnotes. Kind of ran out of time here, I'm sorry. On page 40, I just highlighted there how we figured that Wyoming retirement system, so the state gives us all these figures. So your portion of the plan is like one-tenth of a percent, your portion of the Wyoming retirement system is four-tenths of a percent, and so, um, if we take the liability times your percent, and so that means you're included, $1.4 million is the liability, and there on the law enforcement plan, 1.16 million. The other thing is there that happened in the law, in the law enforcement plan during the year, you can see it went way up, the, the law enforcement plan changed all their assumptions on that, their rate of return and things like that, and retirement ages and things like that, and that changed the whole calculation. So these are highly sensitive to how they, all these assumptions that goes into this, like the way they figure into, all the assumptions are detailed there in the footnote, but it takes into account expected wage increases, retirement date, projected future earnings, and so on. So it's way above my pay grade how they figure all that, so, on that. But that's why the Wyoming, that's why the law enforcement plan fluctuated there because they changed all their assumptions. There was assumptions changes in the public employee plan, but they didn't have near, as severe of effect. Okay, and you also had a smaller percentage of those, you only had, yeah, four times, of course, there's a lot less people in the law enforcement plan than there is the public employee plan. Okay, and then the last, we go through the budgets, the budgets versus on 44 and, 43 and 44, and then on page 48 through 51, is a smaller, all the smaller funds, so like you can see there on page 48, we have the Mallow camp, public health grants, family planning, so that's all the smaller, all the smaller funds, and then they get rolled up and get included into the front part of the financial statements. On page 52, is our report on compliance with laws and regulations and internal control like I referenced before. Then on page 54 is our, um, report on the ARPA funding spending, like I said, there's only two transactions, and the tests are identified there in the third and fourth paragraph, and if we had any problems with those transactions. And then on page 55 and 56, I have our, I have two findings, and we've talked about in the past, and Nathan and I were on the phone, I think about the other one here again, uh, on that, just the small office size, primarily in the smaller component units, you know, where like at the fair, she was only the one doing the book, or at the, you know, or at the Mallow camp, or, or so on, and I mean, the board's taking an active interest in that. Okay, I mean, every bill, I mean, I check when we go to the fair, I go to the Mallow camp or whatever, the library, the library's got a little bit more, uh, they got an outside bookkeeper and stuff like that, but it's like the fair, there's only one bookkeeper, but I mean, we make sure that she's given the board the bank's statements and, and having the board sign off on the checks, and the board signing the bills and everything like that, to make sure that there's procedures in place so there's a check there. But they're just, when we get into a small situation, that's when there's a higher level, that's usually where things occur, okay? I mean, here, here, I mean, there's the department head signing off, it comes through payables, it comes before you, and so on, so there's a, there's multi-levels here versus there, there might just be one level of that, okay? And then the other, and I, I think I, all as I'm saying on this law enforcement is that there are procedures, policies are, that are not, and a lot of places I go, law enforcement's different, so don't get me wrong, but, um, on that, that there's, there's different things that go into their job than there is other jobs that are in the county. I mean, they need to have on-call time, they need to have holiday pay and things like that, so I mean, but, but I would just think it would be good for the, for that department to get those things in writing on that. Um, you know, I mean, they have a different, I mean, there's different things that they want, and I don't really care if, if they're different, but I mean, the problem when, when we have something with, because these things are different than the policies that are adopted for the rest of the county. And so I think if you're gonna, the first thing that's going to happen if a lawsuit would come up, which you never think is going to happen, but it does, is they're going to say, what are the written policies?
And I think Paul mentioned that we visited, but I think that's what, one of the aspects of what Genie's just really working on right now is to try and solve that.
Yeah, and I mean, yeah, I mean, because I've had, you know, I mean, um, I mean, I haven't been involved in a lot, but the first thing that the attorney's going to ask is, what's documented? And I mean, I, I could, you know, I, I go to, I audit for other counties, and I can tell you that things aren't always quite the same in law enforcement as they are rest of the county, but let's get that put down. And I'm not saying they're doing anything wrong or anything like that, but they're not, like they have, they have on-call time. Well, what's that on-call time supposed to be? How's that figured? Or they get paid a half, or double time for holidays, okay? And then the other thing I, you know, I mean, a lot of this stuff is three, four generations ago, clerks and treasurer, or clerks and sheriffs, and you cannot tell me, just like anything, I mean, things deviate from what they were originally planned, and what's going to happen when the next set of persons is in there. Yeah, yeah, we had a nice call, and, and I covered, I copied you on the email that I sent to her, I finally got back to her, and, I mean, I, I can't tell you what's right or wrong really on that, but I think, you know, I mean, I, I think the, the more things that are documented of how it's done, the more protected everybody is.
Well, yeah, it's a couple litigation, they ask for that, the sheriff can read into the words, they use the policy, and then it's in writing, you have to figure it out then.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I mean, I was involved in a, in another county where the, you know, it was, it was, whether it was a, one of the things she's addressing is it exempt or non-exempt, you know, um, and everybody thought the person was an exempt employee and didn't even realize that the person had all these extra hours of, she was documenting, I mean, it was, it was kind of a weird case, but she was, the person was documenting that she was doing all this time, overtime and above what her normal business hours were. She was at a remote location, so nobody knew if she was there, but she had to document it, and the county didn't have a chance, they had to pay her.
Yeah, I think what Paul's addressing here, I, I know Genie is aware of it, and is trying to get an active solution to it, and I think it may not even hurt to reach out to other counties and see how they're, the smaller counties, how they're handling it on their end, even if we can learn someone from a county here, Nineberry County, on how they're doing theirs.
And I mean, like I said, each, every place I go, law enforcement pay is not, I mean, they got to keep different hours and things like that, and so I mean, it's not always the same, but, um, you know, I mean, there's this lag, and I don't, no other county employee's got a two-month lag on their first paycheck like they do. But, so I mean, it's, I mean, and I'm not saying that that's wrong, it might, to me, it might not be fair, but, um, it causes some problems when the clerk's office goes to do the WRS reports, and, and do the, uh, the workers' comp reports and things like that, because they're letting them report the, the wages worked for that month that the clerk is reporting on, that the county's reporting on, but for those employees, you're also actually reporting for wages that are two months ago. that are two months ago.
Are you aware, Paul, of any, like, companies that do an outsourced deal, like, officer grabs his phone, he checks in, you know, kind of something like that, or?
Well, and we talked this a little bit on the, on the, I, I mean, I'm not, I don't, just for law enforcement?
Yeah.
I mean, I guess I'm not, in, don't get involved in a lot, but I mean, you know, with all these cases that are coming up, you're referring to the, like, brutality and things like, or things like that, and all this other stuff, to, to track where, where they're at and things like that? I mean, I would think that there would be, to have to be something, I mean, I mean, are there always gonna be, I mean, I guess I've never gotten into that, but I mean, you'd have to talk to the sheriff, but I mean, I'm sure with all the location and GPS and everything, that...
I was just saying, more of a real-time system that accounts for the officer coming on duty and off-duty and...
Like the time recording app on your phone?
Right, yeah. I mean, I think...
Instead of having to go to the office and...
We talked a little bit about the, we have a, well, city, it's like, and it's Torrington that we audit. You know, I mean, they're, they're actually doing their time on their phone. You know, I mean, the problem is, I mean, the one thing, I don't know if it'd be like Rowan Bridge, do they all report here first and then go out, or do they start wherever they ended up last night?
They all, they all report at the shop.
They all report at the shop first to check in. I had some counties, bigger counties, where, you know, they, they were essentially going out to wherever they ended up tonight, and starting there, and so they could be checking the app on their phone. Or the other was like the, the city of Torrington, all the Parks Department employees. I mean, they're not coming in, they're going directly to the site where they're working for that day, and they could check in on their phone. Another thing we talked a lot, a little bit about was electronic timekeeping too. And a, a lot of the places that I'm going to, and it's, I mean, it's slowly, it's not everybody at one time, but are going to the, to the, the online or the electronic time card. And so the employee would enter their time, and then, then the department head actually has to go, instead of going in and signing a time card each month, they would go in and approve it. So the clerk's office cannot get the time card to process a payroll until the department head essentially goes in and proves it and releases it to you. And then all the hours and everything, if it's an hourly employee, just imports into the time, so it eliminates that, eliminates that entry to, it minimizes the manual entry time, and, you know, I mean, I, I know everybody checks and double checks the payroll and things like that, but supposedly by doing it that way, it minimizes the time for error, or the errors on, on the manual computing.
I wonder how they do that where they don't have to be attached to vouchers?
Yeah, I mean, what they do then is you just put the voucher on the bottom of the...
On the time sheet?
On the time sheet.
Print the report off and...
It's just print, yeah, uh-huh. And it makes it real easy for me as auditor, I just come in and instead of digging through, you know, you don't have that many.
Do you know which county uses that?
I, I have, I don't know that I have a county that you, well, Sublet County, I can talk with Carrie.
I'll call, I'll look.
But she's on a different software than you two.
They're not on Tyler?
No, they're not on Tyler. They're on that software that the guy from Yewinto writes. I can't remember the name of that, that he's developed. But I do have, the other is, you know, I, but I mean, if you would contact Tyler, I would think that they would have a list of, I'm sure they've probably already written a program for it. I'm sure they've probably already written a program for it, or they'll give you a list of vendors that sell time card, like TimeCup Plus or something like that. They would give you a list of vendors that is compatible with, with Tyler. And I've had, mainly the school districts, some, some of the county, or, I haven't had the counties going to it quite as much on that, but like I said, the city of Torrington's done it, and it just makes record storage. You don't have a great big box of time card, you have everything in there electronic, and you can just go in and print out the time card. The other thing I've had a lot of things, places go is to electronic storage of the vouchers and things like that.
She wouldn't be told it no more.
She wouldn't be, yeah.
Do you see any potential downfalls to that though? If, I mean, if something happened and, you know, everybody talks about EMPs and things like that, if you had a major downfall in your, in your electric grid or something, I, I mean...
The biggest thing that, are you, has Tyler been pushing you to go to cloud-based? I've had some vendor companies pushing, especially the school districts, to go to cloud-based. You know, which, I don't know. I had the one case where somebody was backing up cloud-based, and their system failed, and it was almost impossible to get the records back off the cloud and get them back downloaded back onto their system. That was a real struggle on that. You know, I, I've got my vendors that we use are pushing me to go to cloud-based. There's one software company that both of the schools in the county both use, were forced. They said, we're not gonna support it if it's not cloud-based anymore. I, I don't know, I worry about security about that. They, you know, everybody assures me that it's just as good, but I, I, you know, I don't know. I mean, that would be something that you would have to discuss more with your IT.
You need to have Tyler come visit with us and see what, what options we could have. My thinking is like easier in ways.
I don't know, I mean, that, you know, it's just kind of the way, you know, and it's slowly, I mean, it's not just, everybody's moving all in one time, but I mean, it is, you know, I've had one county that went to completely processing their payroll with ADP, so they don't even do the payroll process anymore. Which, ADP has some checks and balances, things like that that they do, but then the problem is you getting ADP to, you gotta get the time, still gotta get the time cards to ADP, or the time to ADP and update the, the pay rates and things like that, and then they process all the payroll on their system, and then they come back in and, and then, but you gotta get all the ADP debt, and you need to debt go to the budget and stuff. I'd like, I'd like to make a suggestion, but, on that, I mean, that's all I can, I can't tell you what to do, anything like that, then I, that's not my, that's not my job or anything like that. I don't know if anybody's got any questions, but if you want me to be available on, I think it's like the twenty-first or whatever, I'll make time, or if I, you know, I'll have to do it virtually, or I can, on your next meeting, I can, if any questions come up or anything like that, I gotta get a letter to you, Michael, for any litigation on that. I'll get that to you tomorrow, so you can get that over.
Gee, I've been listening in, so, on all this stuff.
Okay.
Sure. And then what you'll need, after you get that from Michael, then you'll need the board just to sign off on the audit.
On the audit, yeah. And we'll try to get, I'll have that up here to you by the meeting on paper.
Well, we can go through here if we have any questions.
Yeah.
Going through our reports.
Yeah. The one thing, and I don't care how you do it either, with the ARPA money, has it got that second payment coming in, or have you already spent it and everything? I think I talked to you about it a little bit. I had some of the counties just declared as lost revenue.
Oh, they already did.
Okay, all right, on that second, that second payment, okay.
We, we did it and didn't realize that we hadn't done it in a motion, and we, it was eight or so years.
Okay.
Yeah, we did it officially, officially reported, so we went back and officially recorded it in our, in our minutes, so it was...
Okay, all right, okay.
They did it on, on the, when they were doing it on the report, when they were doing the ARPA report online.
Right.
They clicked the button to do lost revenue.
Uh-huh.
And then, yeah, so we just had to do it.
Yeah, just avoids a lot of the, a lot of the strings with it and everything else.
Yep.
Okay.
The, the tribal funds, do you have any advice for that?
Oh, I haven't even been asked that, huh? No, okay, so, I'm sorry. I'll, I'll...
They're, they're different.
Okay.
Than the ARPA and the cares.
All right, I haven't had that bridge to cross yet, so I'm sorry, so I'll look at that.
I, I've tried to dig into it, figure it out, but it's, I mean, that thing's this thick and it's...
Yeah, that ARPA thing was two hundred and fifty pages, I mean, yeah.
My mind starts melting after about page fifty.
I'll, I'll just Google in some stuff, because I'm gonna have to learn about it eventually on that, so.
Because we've already gotten money from you.
How much did you get?
Two hundred and something.
Two seven earrings of belt me for some reason, but...
Yeah, that's...
Very small.
Did you put it aside, did you put it in the general fund, or did you put it aside like you did the ARPA?
Separate.
Separated out.
Okay.
To track them better.
Yeah. Anyone else have any questions to Paul? I know it's a lot. People tell me it's like bringing from a fire, but I'm sorry.
Late night reading.
Thank you, question, we got to get Paul.
Oh, four hundred and ninety-six thousand.
Oh, half a million, though, okay.
Appreciate your input.
Thank you.
For Paul.
Thank you, yeah, you're welcome, let me, let me know.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you. Oh, yeah, okay. Okay, next up is elected officials of department head reports.
I was listening, but...
Yep, just grab a chair. Who's got the tightest schedule needs to be back to their office.
I'm kind of reading it.
Then you're up front.
Your staff is on the...
Your boy, just, uh, just wanted to speak to Michael and ask who you are, and then let's there.
Hi, I'm Vicki Hayman with the University of Wyoming Extension Office, and I'm just gonna talk about my role this past year and what I've done. So I'm recapping the past year, and then the next meeting I'll go forward with where we're going this year, if you're okay with that. So December first, I celebrated twenty-five years with extensions, so I have at least one more year, maybe three, and hopefully I'll get retirement. So that's kind of my forward plan there. The nutrition food safety team is now gonna be called the Community Vitality and Health. So they're merging me, I'm the sole person, as you know, in the original nutrition food safety team, in with community development. So I'm not quite sure where we're going yet, but we're starting out this year, so we'll see. Last year I taught twenty-nine in-person educational classes throughout the area. I still write a bi-weekly column for the Gazette and some area newspapers. Once a month I'm in the newsletter journal, I have a weekly extension spot on the radio, which I convert to podcasts on our website. I teach regionally with the University of Idaho, a food preservation class twice a year, and that's like a six-week online class, so it's a lot of fun. We have a nutrition and food safety website, and I'm pretty much the sole person on that as far as getting anything on there, whether it's a podcast, or it's a handout, or a blog, whatever. I'm pretty much running that and keeping up with that is, is a lot of work. The past year I've had two research projects. One was called high-altitude baking, and so I'll show you that in just a minute, and so it's completed. The second research project is working with specialty crops. So we're gonna be doing zucchini, peppers, and tomatoes are the three things. So that's ongoing and gonna keep me really busy this spring. I've worked as a member of the Heritage Park Committee, so they got that feasibility study done, as some of you may be aware, and they're looking forward to moving on to find grant funding to build the park. And then Crystal Zerby will probably speak just a brief minute, and she's our new CNP educator that works part-time in Weston County, so I'm just starting off with her, we haven't done too much together yet. And then Aaron will talk to you about 4H. And so I just wanted to show, I'm just showing and telling, but like, here's one of the publications that I did for extension, they're offered online, and this one is food preservation, this one is a canny one, those are classes that are still really popular and ongoing. And then this is the, the project that we did with high altitude and the cookbook, and so that was a really good project. So just busy doing a lot of things, hopefully answering a lot of questions through email, calls, walk-ins, also on whatever the, the topic is, and if we can help them, we'll forward them on to someone that can, if it's not in our area of expertise, so. Any questions on what all I've been accomplishing?
Questions for Vicki?
Congratulations on that.
Oh, thank you, thank you. It went on fast. Some days, some days not.
Thank you, Vicki.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vicki.
I'll let someone else sit in this spot.
Your next in line, Tina.
Okay. Tina Cody, Court of District Court. We went live on our new court computer system the beginning of November. We are adjusting. It's still a work in progress learning curve, but seems to be going well. We are having some major difficulties with our telephones, dropped calls, static, third-party calls, which makes me feel like a kid again. So I got a quote from Range, who is the phone system upstairs for the court. It's for three, it's three hundred and five dollars over the course of thirty-six months. That will drop after the equipment is paid for. All the phones will stay the same, however, looking into a portable for the vault. Seventy-five percent of our work is done in the vault, we can't hear a thing with the HVAC system that's in there. That's another issue that maybe some point can be addressed by the commission. Absolutely more than happy to come take a tour of the vault, and you can see what it looks like. Lot of revenue in, we've seen an uptick in passports, took in quite a bit of money in January for passport application processing, so that was, I'm not sure what people know that we don't, but vacations. So I can pass the, the quote around, but I don't know. I've had several emails from attorney's offices, people coming in saying, gosh, you're on the phone all the time, I can't get through. Either it, it looks like it's gonna ring and nobody's there when we pick up, or they just get it, the...
So...
Questions, they just, just three hundred and five dollars? Questions, they just, just $305?
That's, that's.
There's no 305, 5,000, just 305 dollars?
That's, that's over the course of 36 months.
Okay, okay.
Yes, so it's going to be.
305 a month?
Yeah, it'll be 10,980 over that 36 months. So I broke it down monthly, it's going to be 300, 3,660 roughly. So I will need an increase in that budget line to support the funds.
And then we purchased back when?
When Sandy was the clerk, early 2000s. So I wanna say I probably, maybe 2008, '09, I was there a few years before she left them. And Range has said they will not support the broadband anymore.
How soon are you gonna need that decision?
Pretty soon before we lose phone. I, I don't know how long it will take before they decide they're not gonna do it anymore.
I guess we'd like to put that on the agenda, make a decision on that in two weeks for our next meeting. Just that you can have a presentation to us then.
Okay.
Anybody have any questions for Tina? Could you get that to back to you, she just emailed a copy of it?
Sure.
Look, hold for the next email. Thank you. Questions for Tina? Thank you, Tina, thank you.
Hi, Suzie Oberman, Weston County Trader. We've just been, we've been noticing a lot of new vehicles come through, so that makes the sales tax a little bit better. We've been doing registrations and collecting taxes. But I do have a project for you. I've brought it in front of the old board, but it's there in Garrett, probably, I think they were in the audience, but. It's that county optional property tax relief. I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask for you to make a decision on it, whether the county wants to do this or not. It's gonna take a lot of work for you guys, because you're the ones that are gonna have to put up all the forms and figure out how it's supposed to be implemented. So I guess I would like to set up a workshop to do that, or you guys can make a yea or a nay, I, whatever your. But I know, I know you guys have got all copies of this.
And we might hesitate about two, maybe three weeks to see what comes out of legislative, because there is all sorts of bills up there.
For the taxes.
For the tax relief stuff.
But this would be a county funded.
Yeah. See, there's some other ones out there that are maybe, that are trying to take the place of this, maybe, so.
Yeah, there's a lot of, a lot of different ones, different ways going out, down, down through there. Some of them are biased, but some of them are progressive, too. That's all I've got.
Any questions for Suzie? Thanks, Suzie?
Yep.
Thank you.
Carol Leonardson, Weston County Assessor. Congratulations to the newly elected, good to see you. I guess to start off with, since we do have a couple new commissioners, I do have copies of the overview of our office responsibilities and our calendar timeline. If you're interested in that, I can mail it to you, or any of the current commissioners too, if you want any pressure, I can send that out. This time of year is pretty busy for our office as far as data entry. The field grazers are entering all of their data collected in 2022 for 2023 tax year. Our deputy is entering all the personal property, oil and gas, and veterans exemption information on top of the everyday owner transfer ship. I'm working on valuing stuff for 2023. And will be until NOBs, but also beginning of April, so I'm utilizing the state required sales analysis method. And so far that's gonna work in progress. Replacement cost tables were dropped into our system, late summer, maybe early fall. And unfortunately, replacement costs have gone up again. That's, I don't think anybody's gonna be really surprised to hear that. And I know that even with depreciation, replacement costs and inflation are just outrunning it. So we can expect our values to go up again this year regardless of sales analysis. So be looking to that. As Suzie mentioned, there are several bills and Ed mentioned, right now at the general session, there's several regarding property taxes. Some have already died, some are moving forward, and it'll be interesting to see what's still standing at the end of this. Some are really feasible, targeted relief. Some, we're gonna put a pretty big dent in revenue, so I think some of those are taking some extra consideration. And we'll just kind of see how it goes from there. I know they are expanding the parameters for the state property tax refund to include more people. And I think that's got a pretty strong chance of passing, so that will be good. So NOBs will be going out, like I said, those evaluation. And after that time, appeal period starts. And of course, you all know this board doubles as the county board of equalization, so you will be hearing appeals, if we have any.
On that note, it's, since we are the board of equalization on the appeals, if someone corners you and starts wanting to discuss property taxes, raises something, mildly decline it and refer him back to Karen's office, because we are the board of equalization if it comes to a hearing. So any discussion on that, if it's gonna come to that, needs, they need to be referred back to Karen.
Yes, and I know it's everybody's first instinct to offer help or aid, or speak on their behalf, or try to come up with a solution, or anything. But the only caveat to that is if they formally appeal later on, and you've already spoke to them outside of your role as a county board of equalization member, that puts you in direct conflict with the hearing. So just be aware of that, and I am more than welcome, you know, to come to my office, you come to my office, they can come to my office, we'll go over their property profile, value, why increases happened, if it didn't happen. I'm more than happy to talk to anybody about that. And that's pretty much all we've gotten along right now.
Any other questions for Karen? Thanks, Karen. Thank you, Karen.
Okay, Erin Pershey, Forest Educator. So currently we have 145 4H members across the county, and I've got 19 volunteers all the way through the whole process of getting them the background check in, all the way through the screening. And I've got another nine in the process, so that makes 28 volunteers. Some really fun things that happened in January, the Prairie and Pines 4H Club in Upton has kind of regrouped, and we're gonna hit the ground running, I think, this year, so there's 14 members over there. And then the Upton tumbleweeds, so the five to seven-year-olds, we met for the first time last Thursday and had a really fun group there. So we'll meet the first Tuesday all the way through the spring, and then the tumbleweeds in the summer. We do camp in June, and then the fair activities in July, and then we'll regroup again and start meeting in September. So lots of fun, starting over there in Upton, as we kind of get situated over there. We weighed in 30 market steers in January, so we'll have, we should have somewhere between, around 30 for fair. There'll probably be a few of them that don't make it to fair, so that, they're going. Shooting sports is going like crazy, so maybe one night a week in Upton and two nights a week here in Newcastle. I have 69 youth enrolled in shooting sports across the seven disciplines, so just about half of the kids take shooting sports, so that's really awesome. County shoot for air pistol and air rifle will happen in Newcastle next Monday and Tuesday, and 22 pistol and rifle in Upton next Monday, and then they'll swap seasons, and so if you guys are interested in popping out to the gun range on Monday or Tuesday nights to see the kids shoot, it's really, it's a really good time, and that bunch of leaders does a fantastic job. I've got dog, robotics, and the food fun and 4H groups meeting. Dog twice a month, robotics just started, we had 13 kids on Friday. So my biggest challenge now is to figure out where they're going to meet every week, because 13 of them and all their robotic Lego pieces in our office is way more than I have space for, so working on that. The presentation contest will happen on Sunday, February 19th at Pinnacle Bank. So if you guys are interested in coming and watching the kids give presentations that afternoon, I would invite you to do so. Coming up, I've got some horse, a horse workshop, a fabric and fashion, and some photography workshops going on this month in addition to everything else. And we're in the process of planning a fun 4H leader summit in Gillette for the northeast area to happen in April, so. Just kind of some of the highlights, I've been sending a chatter, excuse me, once a month out to you guys, so. Anytime you feel the need to stop in and join the organized chaos that some of those activities are, I'd love for you to stop in and just see what's going on, so lots of fun stuff. And then, like Vicki said, this is Crystal.
Your last name?
Yep. Just Zerby, just. So she's the new sensible nutrition educator, we share her with Niagara County, so I'll let her just kind of say hi, what's going on?
So as Vicki and Erin have indicated, I'm Crystal Zerby. I joined the university in July, came to work in September after 23 years of law enforcement. I needed a new perspective and all of that, jumped on board as a CNP educator for both Weston and Niagara County. Mother Nature has been a little difficult and challenging this year. I was able to come up and do a tour with Vicki latter part of November, and this is the second time I've been up since the roads have been all crazy. Just got back from down spending two days with the first lady Gordon, working on Hunger Initiative and Grow a Little Extra. I actually have a meeting up here with the warden at the camp. I'm hoping to get a garden going up there, as well as working with some of the community members here, beginning in the spring for the Grow a Little Extra to contribute to that hunger initiative. And then working a little bit more up in the Upton and Newcastle area. I've got six referrals from DFS for those guys, for the Insta Pot and SNAP programs as well. So that's kind of where I'm at thus far. Looking forward to a lot more fun when the weather is better.
Usually in July, we don't have snow and ice. June and August maybe, but.
Right? Yes. Yes.
Good to have you on board.
Well, thank you.
Thank you for the newsletter every month, that's interesting to read. Anyone else have any questions or comments for?
Chairman, I know. I was just gonna say that since Erin has come, my kids have been involved in 4H. My son's in 4H, my daughter's in free 4H tumbleweeds, and they enjoy it so thoroughly. There's so many opportunities for all the kids in Weston County, I just wanted to say how grateful I am that we have this program in Weston County, and I hope everybody can take advantage of it.
It's good that our, you know, our numbers are up too, that's, that says the program, when our numbers start climbing.
It seems like more kids have been involved these songs.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Got you, your first appearance.
Any others? I'll save that spot for you.
I think it looks better when you're up there on the other side.
Well, howdy. Yeah, first time.
Might introduce yourself to people.
All right, Scott Beach, West County Attorney. And we had a few calls in January, and they were both, I would say very easy in that aspect. Like to start out easy, I guess. I do have a few questions. I think the first one, where are the files, the corner's files being put?
That's a very good question.
Because I know.
I would assume you'd probably need to get ahold of Sandy.
Cindy has claimed that she has talked to maybe Nathan, and was thinking that they needed to go somewhere in the annex or something.
Well, didn't you guys talk about storming somewhere?
We talked a little bit about it. You had an idea of doing, having them secure at the.
At search and rescue.
Search and rescue.
Because we do have a secure office.
As long as it's a secure, you have access to them, which you need. That like there at the annex or in here, you would, yeah, right, access might be a little limited.
When I do most of my work, it would be after hours, so we can weaken, so. Anyway, if that's okay, Cindy's kind of waiting on someone else to tell her that besides me.
To release them to you?
Yep. I'm not sure why exactly, but anyway, if we could get that done real kindly, like in the next day or two, I could use the record.
There's a question, even as far back as Tracy's, I assume he hasn't, but.
Yeah.
Maybe if we send out a formal letter to.
Of all that stuff.
Yeah, well, we wanted to know where to put them first. So I, I think that's a pretty good idea, because if it's secure.
It is, yeah. And my deputy would have access as well.
Michael, would you want to reach out?
Yeah.
To get them released then?
Sure, I can do that.
You are the other person?
Yeah.
The last person? Okay.
Yeah, thanks. Has county turned in all of their bills so far, you know? I had better check on that. And for anybody that, that might not know, I did choose Marina Gobain, is my deputy, and she's been swimming. She'll be helping me out with that. And then, I'm not sure how this happened, so there had been a rent line item in the budget before. And there's not one now, I'm just curious as to why that, or how that happened.
I would think you'd say it probably just got overlooked at budget time, but you got a better idea?
Yeah, so Cindy was doing it in her home, and then when it came time for budget, Scott was going to be at the fairgrounds, and the board decided that the county cannot pay the county money, so there was no money put in there.
So it's not paying the county, it'd be paying the search and rescue, which is a nonprofit organization.
It's under the sheriff, is why.
There's, there's a couple issues there. First, it is a nonprofit organization, it's a volunteer organization, and they got utilities, they got, they're paying, they're paying for utilities, power, you know, those kind of things, and I think that the reason we wanted to do it that way, and you can call it what you want, grant, whatever, but because he's in there, they're all, it's gonna create an increase in those utility bills because of heat, lights, that kind of stuff, because he, there's some of that stuff, we have to keep him warm, equipment wise. I mean, I think the county, out of the 1%, gives 4,000 to the search and rescue, everything else they raise, fundraise for.
I, I did present it in the budget that I was asked to present earlier, before I was an office portion. And I did have a, a figure there, and I know it was quite a bit less than what Cindy was requiring. I had asked for $3,000 a year, so 250 a month. It's pretty cheap. It's pretty cheap. Also, the remodel project in that building, the search and rescue is being for and using manpower. I just was looking at some figures here last night. Since January twenty-first, with utilities and supplies, building supplies, we are thirteen thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars. And most of that work will, is the meeting room, restrooms, office, that's where, that's all being put, and we're not done yet. And that's what will be used by the coroner's office in any time I need meetings. So I, I kind of had made a deal with Search and Rescue at the time, when we first talked about it, see if I could use that facility. So, you know, really, we would owe them something. I feel that, I feel that two fifty a month is very reasonable.
Not a hundred percent opposed to that, but, you know, when they, they came to us wanting to use that building, and that was part of their, their idea for free use, they would do upkeep, so it's not like they're not getting something in benefit in return. So I would like to point that out, but, I mean, we're not charging them a thousand dollars a month in rent, so.
But the coroner's office, I am using their facility.
And that's, I understand.
So I need to, either, either we do that, or I need to move, because otherwise, I'm mooching, and I don't do mooching.
Not all bad.
So we'd have to have a budget.
Could we rather do a next bureau? Or just review how we want to do it?
Right. I mean, I think there's still some money, there's some spots in the budget. I know it's tore up bad, my budget, but I think to finish out this fiscal year, I think I can come up with the money out of my budget to take care of. And then we can regroup for the next time around and get it as a line item.
You'd need a thousand bucks to finish off.
Fifteen hundred. And I think we could work that out, but again, you'll have to decide where that comes out, or you can...
You could get with me and let me know where people want to figure it out from the like that resolution, like for the next year. Because he can tell me when he wants to move it out of his budget. And then...
Is two fifty gonna cover the added expenses of heating, stuff like that? I think that's looked at pretty close. You know, not trying to make money on anything, it's just, it's just to help them pay some of those expenses, spaces that they're not able to use.
And it is working out well for that. And we get help from Search and Rescue, the coroner's office. So, yeah.
Yeah, just get with Vicki on where, where you can enable it out of your budget, and then we'll, you know.
Okay. One other thing that's coming up is autopsies. We lost our forensic pathologist, who should have retired. So now, say you don't do what, we have to go to rapid. And I'm not sure what that's gonna cost yet, that's why it's pretty, so I'll give us Mike. There is another, I just got a letter a couple weeks ago, that Fremont County, it's a lander, they now have a pathologist over there that's willing to start doing in other counties, but, but that's quite a, that's hardly been around. And they have some figures of what they'll be charging, kind of the flat rate. So I need to find out what rapid is actually charging, and see which way we go. I'll keep you posted.
Yep, we'll get to the number for the others.
Yeah.
We have to decide which way we need to go with the town.
Right. And something to just be thinking about for the next fiscal year budget, the funeral parade, and that's our morgue, we're at the morgue right now. They are adding a cooler, just a one space. And also have offered the use of van, which we have used before, and the coroner's office has a lot easier, good autopsies. Anyway, but they are looking at a fee coming the next fiscal year. There really needs to be some payback. Again, you know, not just sharing all the time, because that gets lopsided. So they're working at either per day fee for the cooler, or monthly, just have a flat monthly. So again, I'll be working on those figures and kind of think about how many days it's been used. And then if we need to use the van, you know, what kind of fee, like three hundred fifty bucks, I will be presenting that for the next...
Anybody have a question, comments for Scott? Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
I'll call you later.
Be patiently waiting.
Yeah.
From the homie airs, Weston County Library System. Start off with thanking you all for repairs that have been completed on the windows at Upton Branch Library and through the county library. As you'll see later on when we do a tour, we have a list of other things that will be presented down there, that have been neglected for quite some time. Some of the more fun things that we get to do at the library are, if we continue to do public storytimes, we do those on Tuesdays at eleven. Our children's library also reads to three daycares each week, and to the Weston County Children's Center, three or four classes come each month and attend storytime. We're also reading to adult services care for persons with disabilities, and so they attend once a week. Upton Branch Library does Storytime to Go kits and has a Lego club that reads monthly. We currently just finished our third creative aging class. I've been able to get grants through Lifetime Arts and their Division of Creative Aging. Walter's been our instructor for those. They're eight-week courses, and this last one had fourteen participants. We just started our thirteenth year with the Volunteer Income Tax Assistance Program. We partner with the IRS and prepare tax returns for, they've set a salary or a wage limit of who they'll prepare those returns for. We began that on January thirtieth, that runs through April fourteenth, and last year we had seventy-eight returns that were prepared for people of Weston County. One of the things we're kind of excited about that's new, going to begin having self-measured blood pressure checkout kits. You'll be able to come to the library here or in Upton, either to check out a blood pressure cuff, which would be beneficial to those who may have a doctor's requirement to check the blood pressure for a certain amount of time, you know, or marginalized, can afford to buy it, you know, will have that opportunity. The press release states that the kits are available in both English and Spanish. They'll include a clinically validated automated home blood pressure cuff, blood pressure log books, educational materials from the Heart Association, including how to measure your blood pressure at home, infographics, information on what blood pressure is, and ideas for healthy lifestyle changes. Kits also include a resource directory to local, community-based organizations and resources. And this is going to be made possible through partnering with the Wyoming Department of Health and the Wyoming Center on Aging. So I'm hoping to get that kicked off into March sometime. And then, the not-so-fun stuff we get to do, been working with the board on updating policies. We're starting to go back and go through some of our older policies and update those. The one we're currently working on is the patron policy. And then I have been working on the really not-so-fun statistics report that I have to submit to the Wyoming State Library every year. And one thing of note, in this age of internet, when people think libraries aren't being used anymore, we had visits of twenty-five thousand, two hundred and thirty people into the libraries last year or so. Any questions?
I have one.
Yes?
If you want to talk about it here. What's happening with that legislation we were talking about?
There were three bills brought before the state legislature this year, one through the Senate, one through the House, and those had verbiage that would basically eliminate in state statute, the exemption for obscenity charges against librarians and educators. By virtue of what we do and First Amendment rights, we have a motion to help people from A to Z. Those were both defeated. A last-minute, third effort was made through the House again. The first two bills wanted to make it a felony charge that we could be, if someone found a book that they didn't agree with, that we could be held criminally responsible for that. So thankfully, those two bills were, they did not have any...
They died, didn't they?
Yeah. The third bill, they eliminated that aspect of it, the criminal aspect of it, but it didn't even, it was brought up in the House, and it didn't even, it didn't seem to light it, they died for lack of a second.
Didn't make it out.
It didn't even get out of committee, so.
Thank you.
Yes.
The Astronomical Society and the Starblast Telescope and stuff, and the education that was going on with some of those star parties, is that continuing on?
Yes, we don't have anything scheduled right now. And that's what I debated, whether to, like, bring up things that we've done previously or just start from January. And those are things, I mean, when we talk about the blood pressure cuffs, there's been a category created called Library of Things, and the blood pressure cuffs will be played that. We have cake pans that are available for checkout. We have a telescope that was gifted to us a year and a half ago.
Something like that. I know those star parties were really educational, and I thought they were well-attended.
Right. Upton Branch has had a telescope for probably four years now. And so those are things that aren't typically, you know, people don't associate with the library, that can be checked out and that are utilized by our communities.
That's now so, Brenda? Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mike Stoltz, Weston County Attorney. We've had an uptick in civil stuff that we can't discuss openly, but it's just been, it's been a lot more busy in that regard. So that's happening. We did have, you know, it did slow down on the criminal end a little bit for a while, but that seems to be picking up again, and that, you know, it's just how it works, I suppose. And to that regard, I want to do say something positive about city-county relations. It appears, you know, that with the new chief, the deputies and the chief and everybody, from what I've observed, are getting along really well, and that's positive progress. So that's good, that's good, it's good to see. And bringing up another common theme that Tina brought up, since Mr. Berger left, we've been operating with foot phones, and it's kind of not very convenient for staff. So I'm gonna be looking into, within budget, hopefully, getting that problem, I don't know if it's a problem, but getting that resolved so we can have actual phones, and we're not passing nineteen-eighties foot phone to each other when we have to talk. And that's about it, that's all I have.
Any questions or comments? Michael? Thank you, Michael.
We don't have anything going on really in my office now that we're done with the elections, other than our day-to-day operations. I am gonna be getting ready, and start sending out budget stuff early this year, so that the departments can hopefully have something to me on time, the ones that usually wait till about the very last minute, but our budget should run through early this year. Don't see any departments needing extra stuff, other than possibly the ones that are talking about their phones. The coroner, he kind of was thrown a curveball because his budget was probably spent before he took office. So, other than that, we're just dogging away.
Do you have your question?
Well, I have a question.
Could you state your name?
Jim Darlington. Indian Carriage Grazing Association.
Or you propose a comment here, or just...
Well, it's wide open. I'm just seeing how much you guys know about the recent, I guess, the article on the front page of the Weston County Gazette from the mayor's corner there, that all board members, by action of the state legislators who exempted themselves, will be required to have training by July of twenty-four. And like with Indian Carriage, you know, it's public money, but it's US money, it isn't state or county money. So I don't know if any of you have seen this legislation, or I could do some searching on the interweb and stuff, but, you know, we have hard enough time filling boards already who thought this was a wonderful idea.
I haven't seen any yet come out of there on it, but...
But it's the Department of Audit who is the dictator on this. Michael did kind of insult me on the foot phones there, I have twenty-five... It's way beyond nineteen eighty.
You know, that's something we just keep us updated on it.
Well, yeah, I can look in for answers, but...
You're a little out from under our jurisdiction.
Well, yeah, but I, I just didn't know if you guys had had any dealings with that yet.
Not yet.
Well, that answers that question.
I can talk to you after, I can talk to you after I talk to the department.
Oh, okay. We'll give me a shower. Thank you.
All right. What do we got after lunch? Yeah, we have nobody coming in to speak on anything.
Is there gonna be a public comment?
Yes, we'll get in the meeting. We'll actually do it before we do the, we'll probably, after our new business, we will adjourn our meeting.
Is it lunch, you're saying?
Yeah, it'll be after lunch.
Okay. It's on there twice.
Yeah, we can do it quick, I guess, before we go to lunch. Got to keep related towards county business.
My name is Stanley Jocinski, landowner and pack player. I'm going on the record today, over the last eight months or seven months, I've had two encounters with the sheriff's department here in Newcastle. The first one was July twelfth, outside this building. I was confronted by two sheriff deputies. One was Shefty Fields, Deputy Fields, who said I had broken election law, and that I had to remove a plaque from my car, my truck. I don't believe I violated any laws, and I don't believe that plaque was illegal. And the second episode happened yesterday, where I was going into bungards, and I get a yell from across the parking lot. I was Jocinski, it could have been Hey Jocinski or Stan Jocinski, I don't know, I thought it was one of my friends. I turned around, it was a sheriff. I turned around, it was a sheriff deputy, Sheriff Ingle. Again, I'm going to request body cam materials on both of these incidents, calls to report that sent these deputies after me for these incidents. So, until I see that, I'm not sure, but I don't believe that Deputy Sheriff Ingle identified himself upon approaching me or why he was confronting me. But what he did ask me if I was armed. And my response was, why do you ask? Well, you just got accused of giving somebody the finger and, of course, this is right out of the textbook, menacing shaking of my finger in a firearm or gun, in a gun, in the shape of a gun. I categorize deny both of those things then. I do it here now. I filed a complaint against the UPS driver that filed this false claim against me. And with the red flag laws and all this craziness going on, I don't know when the next time I'm going to get the S-Black SUVs rolling through my property and banging on the door to confiscate my guns because somebody feels that I'm a menace. I looked up the menacing laws because I don't know if I only has it, you might know, but in Colorado, they have it as a felony. You can go to jail for years, all right? So, I was told that this happened or that this complaint happened. I denied it then, I deny it now, and I'm putting myself on public record for protection. Because I don't know when it's going to be, well, failure to turn without a signal, way in between lanes, maybe, who knows? He didn't park, which is exactly right, because I've been politically outspoken, outspoken. Everybody knows that. And with the recent committee meetings, I've spoken out against the weaponization of the Department of Homeland Security against the American people, which is tied to the sheriff's department. Again, I don't know if anything's tied together, but I'm not going to take this chance where I'm going to walk into a store and I got a sheriff's deputy screaming at me from across the parking lot. And what if I was armed? What would have happened then? What if it was a traffic stop? Because apparently there was an all coins bulletin issued for me, and the sheriff went racing up Musser Road thinking he could get to my place. He was so, whatever, lost. But under those circumstances, what if I was armed? What if it had been a traffic stop? I'm just saying, I'm going on the record. And this continues, and I'm going to solicit all this information. And, yeah, I just want my vote to go. Thank you.
It's worse either up or down. I'm okay up, I'm okay down, so if you don't mind, I'm going to stay up for a bit. I was unable to get on your agenda.
Please identify yourself.
Because I was a day late.
Identify yourself.
I'm Henry Nessel. I was unable to get on your agenda because I was a day late in reaching out to the county clerk. My apologies for that, but I'm unable to attend your next meeting, so I did not want to let this wait too much longer formally. Introducing myself, I'm Henry Nessel. I'm your new president of the Chamber of Commerce, and I'm introducing myself as the president of the Chamber of Commerce. Briefly, the chamber is reforming. We're reviewing bylaws and policies, procedures, documents, which really, from what I can tell, the files have not been updated since 2015. The chamber elected its board in January and has seated the board. The four executive team members are Treasurer Ashton Farnsworth, Secretary Melissa Hammond, Vice President James Kern, and myself, Henry Nessel, President. We ask, as we're still preparing to hire a part-time employee, that please understand the force of volunteers. We still have our own businesses to work, we have employers to work for, so we're a little slower than we were before, but we're moving along. The chamber is back. There was turbulence in November that was created between a confrontation over at the city council meeting on November seventh. That turbulence is over. And we kept a promise and had the lighted parade when it was all spread around town that the lighted parade was canceled. So, the board is moving forward, and your Chamber of Commerce for the Newcastle area, including parts of Western County, is here, and we're ready to continue on as business people, working for business people and with our government. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Henry. You have a public comment? We will adjourn. We have nobody scheduled to come in. Twenty-five minutes long after, everybody. First up on agenda is old business. We have the Call Works system.
I don't know if he's coming up or not.
You know about it? Do you want to give a quick hand-on?
Yeah, Call Works is, in the most basic sense, that's your 911 system. That's what handles the incoming 911 calls. It aids in the mapping location of, so if it's a cell phone, it aids in mapping the location of that cell phone. So if somebody doesn't know where they're at or unable to tell you where they're at, it aids in that. It also prevents non-911 calls from coming in and closing off lines. In other words, if you've got five lines in a building, that also aids in, it keeps two lines clear until that call's done. And it ties into your CAD system, it ties into your radio system, it ties into, I mean, it ties into everything. The reason we are here talking about it today is the previous Call Works system that the city has was purchased by Western County Homeland Security through grant funding. The Call Works that they currently have is good for E-911, and my understanding, it's not upgradable to the next generation 911, which Dan can explain a little more to that. The next generation, it goes way, way beyond that to help deal with these calls that you get, that you can't talk to the person on the other line, or maybe needs to send a text instead of a phone call and a lot of other things, but he can go in deeper on this. That's what it does. That's what the next generation does. The system they got down there is not capable of that. And so, the next gen is, or the next gen is what everybody's working towards, so that was why we thought this was the best way to go instead of litigating that other.
So, now, with this system that we're talking about, call station, if I call on my cell phone, it'll actually tell them, give them a pretty good idea of where that cell phone called, so like landline, they knew exactly where it is.
Yeah, landlines are obvious. I mean, it can tell you where you're at, but if you call on your cell phone, even with, if you call but we can't hear you, I mean, it's that limit of a signal, that prioritizes the location over anything else. So, because it does happen quite a bit, actually. I'll just use domestics, for example. Somebody will use a cell phone to call, but you can't talk to them. We don't know where they're at. I mean, we don't know by number where they're at even, right? It's a cell phone. So, that helps in that scenario. And there's a whole bunch of other stuff it does. It gets really technical and above what we're going to be currently doing, but it allows us to move in that direction.
What was, is there a price, is there a price tag on this one?
Is this what we heard last week? Or the one?
No, he would just, he just blocked us up.
Oh, okay.
So which one of these?
I don't know which one.
Yeah.
One, I was going to think of five years. That's true. Okay, so, yeah, it's service and warranty that we're looking at. So you've got one year, and that's total base system, one-year warranty, prepaid software and onsite support, and then hardware warranty. And what you're doing here is upgrading the maintenance and warranty on that as you go.
Okay. So basically, it's a sixty-three thousand dollar upgrade.
To go five years.
Five years, one year.
I believe that gives you your upgrade and everything else, so. Yeah, so when software upgrades and stuff like that.
Everything's already there.
Everything's already come.
The system spares, Brian, the whole thing.
System spares?
Yeah.
Spare parts. So if that particular Call Works goes down, you can.
Call it down here, but.
Replace that with a limited capable system.
And discussions I have with Motorola is, they've got enough stuff going in the state now, the system we've got and put in place, they may not have the spare parts here, but within an hour and a half, two hours.
Correct.
We can have parts, replacement parts here.
That's at least what they tell us.
Yep, so.
What'd you recommend doing, Brian?
I think that five years, for, with us not having any kind of IP capabilities, it makes sense to do that.
That's twelve thousand a year.
So we do it with like our body cams and stuff like that. They get, if they break their camera, they get a replacement. Any upgrades that come out are automatically set. You know, you're not just purchasing that phone, and then if you break it, you break it and you're done. It's continuously set. We renegotiate ours every five years, in that five-year period. If they come out with a new camera system, we get one, you know, a new camera system, yeah, the software updates, that kind of stuff.
So after that five years, is that a pre-negotiation thing or what?
For the service contract?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, your big cost is the hardware and software, and then it'd probably be your additional twelve thousand dollars a year or whatever after that. Year six.
Motorola does nothing cheap. Well, they do, but they also get control, so.
Yep.
So, we're going to take it out of this line item that, where can I actually find that?
Yeah, I would take it down.
One fifty, zero zero, it's on the last page, page nine. And that's kind of what we agreed with in the past, would be the replacement.
Yeah.
And it's got to be spent though.
By the end of twenty-four.
Yeah.
So, that sounds like a perfect fit for it to come out of.
Well, just keep in mind, according to Gilbert, I got his email, they are going to give the award amounts on that radio money that we gave. And that total amount was. Two, five, six, probably almost seven, seven hundred. If we're awarded all of that, some of that we could put towards it. They're supposed to announce it. Gilbert sent an email saying they're about to announce the awards, so. That could happen as early as today.
Yeah, that's what I was, you know. What's our match on that?
We don't have, that's not a match. Keep in mind, he had wanted, at least if I'm thinking about the right one, some of that was to go to the county fire team to destroy his.
Yeah, I wanted to make sure.
Yeah, so they should be awarding that.
With the board's pleasure.
Make the motion to set the five-year plan total of two-hundred-and-sixty-one thousand, one-hundred-and-seventy dollars, eighty-eight cents. Come out of one-five-zero dot zero zero dot three-two dot zero zero two-nine zero 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 dot one-two-two-six.
This just came, too, that we might want to be nervous of. Just came. The city's announcing a special meeting on the fifteenth for dispatch. It's addressed to us and the county sheriff in regards to dispatch at the city council meeting on the fifteenth.
What time?
Special meeting is called for the purpose of discussing, understanding, and showing and seeing both the city's and the county side of dispatch to be in an understanding of each other's direction as well as to see if a solution can be worked out.
That's February fifteenth? What time do you have on that?
I would think so. I hope so.
Do you have a time? Do you have a time?
Says six P M.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second on that motion. Sorry about that. I just saw one of them.
We have a motion properly seconded to go with the Call Works Plan Two, the total base system with a five-year prepaid software and onsite support, an extended hardware warranty for the amount of two-hundred-and-sixty-one thousand, one-hundred-and-seventy dollars and eighty-eight cents to come out of the home rescue room.
Our Act Twenty-One.
Our Act Twenty-One monies. Is there any other discussion on that?
I just have a question. So if we get this grant money that we put into it, is that money that we can replace then, or does it have to be?
Understood. That is to buy radios for the sheriff's department, fire district, for several county entities.
Oh, okay.
That's above and beyond all the rest of this.
Yep.
Any other questions? Hearing up, all of the favor, please say aye. Aye. Motion carried. Do you want to let Gilbert know, Brian, or?
You want to, too, I'd be glad to.
If you want to go forward with that, okay, we'll do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for that explanation, too. Next is advertise on the county website, on the Newsletter Journal's website, for a five-thousand-dollar discussion. Lord Hadlock actually presented us with a lot of numbers, everybody's got them, on the hits on our website. Get a quick rundown of some of that, Becky.
Yeah, I just, I did contact our website just to see the hits to ours, and they provided that to us, and I printed that off for you guys, so we'll have. Those are the ones with the browns on them. And just so you guys know, each department has, head is in charge of their individual page, so they've updated as much. So they've updated as much as they can or something.
So there's like one point seven, uh?
Yep.
Twenty, twenty-two.
Twenty, twenty-two.
Yeah, we're consistently getting well over a hundred thousand visits every month. So, what's the board's pleasure on this? I, I personally would rather see if we're gonna spend five thousand, we could go up, invest in our own website. I think we get a lot, you know, after seeing these numbers, we're getting a lot of hits on our websites. So, I mean, my, my recommendation from my perspective would be if we're gonna spend five thousand, let's do it on our own website.
Kind of thinking of it the other night. If it's an issue of reaching the general population, I, I'm not a hundred percent opposed to starting our own Facebook page even, because I would argue that we're probably gonna reach more people via Facebook in the county than we might even with some of our newspaper ads. And we don't have to put everything on there, but if the clerk's office could kind of attend to that a little bit and put minutes and put board openings and some of the pertinent stuff that the public would like to know. I was just saying, that's a great way. I mean, I don't have Facebook, but I bet you seventy percent of the county probably does.
I, I, these are really good numbers that are coming across on our own page. I think we're not utilizing it as well as we could transparency-wise. We could put so much more information on there for the public to see. And notes, we could do a monthly statement about what, what we're working on, numbers, help people understand some of the things we do, even with the Forest Service, B L N, things like that. We could put more information on there as far as what's going on with dispatch. I mean, there's a lot of things we could put on there that people, it would draw more people to it. I'm thinking maybe, I'm in agreement with you that we should possibly do more work on our own, on our, on our website at this point, and see if we could get more information up that way.
I, I think that we, I think all of the points are good. The only thing I would say there is is that, you know, we, we talk about all the things we can do, but if it's, it's kind of like our Zoom system, you know, if it takes, you know, a year to accomplish what we should have done or could have done all along, I don't question that. I think that these are great numbers, but I wonder if they would not double or even triple with that added benefit, which isn't to say that anyone, any newspaper couldn't do it, but the Newsletter Journal had brought it up. You know, I heard Becky say that the department heads are kind of in charge of their own thing. I would like to see a more structured platform of what information is available and it not be necessarily up to an individual department head, but what the county wants to see across the board on the, you know, as presented to the citizens. So however that is accomplished, whether it's for this or we're spending five thousand dollars or whatever, but I think that there should be some type of a, a deadline and a timeline, not just an open-ended, wow, we could do it here, and that day doesn't ever, I mean, it doesn't get accomplished. Or it's very slowly and behind the times. So that's my opinion.
I guess the issue I see is if it's mainly just a redirecting deal, we need to do a better job on our page. And I'm still thinking, you know, Facebook, you can put our website on that, link to that account, and, and it's, gives some people, a lot more people, maybe the visibility of it, and it's free.
Couple of observations I have on numbers. When you're talking numbers as far as hits and stuff like that, a lot of them are people that'll go on, they hit, they can't navigate, and they get off. That's a hit. They click on something, it goes to one more page on your thing, that's two hits. One of the problems I see is, and I've been on the county website, it is not well-maintained or well-structured. It doesn't get updated like I'd like to see it get updated. It took forever for certain just, just personnel updates to happen. And it sounds, in my opinion, like you're trying to reinvent a wheel that should already be invented. And we have a wheel that works and could send people to the pages they want to go instead of them getting lost in a sea of links.
Well, what I, what Bob explained that is if they click on that link, it directs them to our website. If our website has problems, we still have a problem. You know, I, the way, the way this explained to me, I don't think by just getting redirected to our website would fix our, our website's problem.
I guess the object of redirecting our traffic, we, I know you're saying you have a hundred thousand, which I'd like to cover that too, by the way, of your traffic on the website. We have, we average one-point-five million a year a month. So this is more about getting information out to your citizens, your constituents. So that's, and the travel commission partners with us as far as redirecting traffic to their website. It's been working well for them. So that's the pitch for the digital option. It's just getting more information out to your constituents.
I was just referring back to, I, I understood it when Mr. Bob explained it, that he could direct it to the exact link, you know, whether it's this section or that, it wouldn't be just the webpage, but I could have been misunderstanding. It would directly take you to the commissioners portion or the treasurer or the, you know, property tax area through those links, but I, I don't know.
Commissioners' minutes.
Yeah.
Argue, still do it for free on Facebook, the most widely used platform in the world.
You're reinventing the wheel again.
That's her, that's his link. I would argue if, I'd ra, I mean, I'd rather see it spend it, getting our, our website working better, you know, get our problems fixed before we start going out to get, coming more to it, you know. If we gotta, if you get to our website and can't navigate, that's our problem, we need to fix that.
I would like to try it for a year and see if we can, if we can fix our end. If we can, then, and if we prove to ourselves that we're incapable of doing that, Bob's still interested in the year. We look at it.
I just don't think it'll be that price in a year.
No, it will not be. I can guarantee you that price is gonna end possibly today.
I just think if we flipped it to see exactly how much our hits would increase, then we know where we need to change our website and exactly what we're dealing with too. So I guess two sides are going. Either way, it's just.
The bottom line is if, if they redirect to us and we still can't get the information to them, we failed in getting the information out. And that's, that is the discussion, getting the information out.
Is that not also part of your accountability and transparency to the public? I hate to be this direct about it, but if we are reporting on something and you're, you should be showing that to the public, and we send them to that link and there's really nothing for them to see, or we make that transparent, that's our job. Then it's your job to respond to that. And if you want to get something working on your website, I can't see of a better way of doing it than the transparency to the public.
I'm unaware of any state statutes that require this on the website. And upgrade it to this, this, or this, I mean, it.
Okay.
That's where I'm at, we're, we're following state statutes right now.
Mm-hmm.
So.
I, I think, you know, I agree with what you're saying about if we're doing it, it should get done in a timely manner. I think possibly the money would be better spent, even if we have to get an IT person or someone consulting with us to do those things on our website and make it easier to use and easier for department heads and for us to add things and keep it updated.
So I know Bob presented the digital option, but the meeting before, I asked if you would agree to do the printed ads that you did the year before. And that option cost, it was two thousand one hundred dollars. And that was the courthouse closures, a monthly board opening, ad, I hope wanted ads, any special meaning you want to say this.
I don't really have much issue if it's that kind of stuff. I think it's important, but I, we've done the minutes, that's.
We do have board advertising in our new business coming up, about advertising.
So you're saying I need to stay for that?
Yeah, yeah, we'll be, just a little bit coming through. So we, uh, just mixing the, that offer.
I just want to make a motion there.
If there's no motion, we just ayes. Okay, we'll move on then. Next is handbook. Vera, you're up.
I've been thinking about our issues with the handbook, and it's come pretty clear to me and probably all of you that we have some updating and things that we should be doing as far as everyone being on the same page, as far as following the handbook once we get it in place. I think right now we need to have a timeline of the handbook being done. And then at that point, we should get together with department heads, go over job descriptions, talk about annual reviews, the importance of those things, and possibly having board members, our volunteer boards, have some training and possibly even sign something that they understand their responsibilities and their job description and what's involved in, and all these things we've been talking about a little bit. I'd like to volunteer myself to go forward and work on some of that and then bring back reports to you as, so you can look at what's been done. I'd like to try to help organize some of that between Becky and Becky and our new consulting service and the state. There's a lot of free training, a lot of free things that we're not taking advantage of that I think is really important, that we start doing that and getting it all. Once we get it all in place, it's going to be easy. It's just a matter of yearly training or whatever that we can get for free from, from two different places. And I'd like to volunteer myself to start organizing our human resources and see if we can get it all together and running smoothly and see if we can get the handbook completed.
When Paul was in here visiting us, Jeannie and I, it was almost two months ago that we talked to him. It took him yesterday, I got his, finally got his response. So I know that she's working on it hard still, and I, have you seen the new copy that she's kind of put together?
I haven't seen a new copy since December, June, November, December.
I, I think I can get it to you. But I think it's awesome if you want to help out, because it would be great, because she's kind of tried using me as a sounding board for some of it too. But when you reach out with like Paul, and then you don't hear anything for two months, and it's been kind of difficult, but I think we're headed in the right direction, I think.
And the handbook's, it's almost like your, your main point that you're, that we need to get that, we need to get that done and approved by the state, and then we can go forward and, and meet with the department heads and everyone and get, get everybody's ideas of what needs to be changed and what, what we can do better. We have this new consultant, consulting company. I think we need to get the information out to everyone that there is a place for employees to go if they have a problem. It's not going to do us any good unless that information is taken and given out to everyone so they know. And so I, I think we need timelines and, and goals to reach. We need to set goals and go forward that way, so that's what I'm willing to do.
I, I think it's great and you work with Jeannie and, you know, even though there's, she's maybe moving forward with it, we don't know it. At least what you can work with, you can give us updates, you know.
Well, I've worked in human resources, I used to be SHRM certified, so I, it's been a while, but I, I, I know the basics and I know how important it can be as far as liability goes.
I think she, that she would probably really appreciate the help, to be honest with you, because she was getting kind of frustrated when we weren't hearing back from Paul or not from Paul's box to say all these, you know, but he did answer a lot of that stuff. Like, I think if there was somebody that really wanted to take it to heart, it'd be great.
I think it's great. Your honor, you're signed up.
Nice. It's, it's, it's a, it's way bigger than we know. But, but if we just bite off a little bit of the time, I think we can get it done. And, and like I said, once we get it all done and, and we have everything together, we can get it all in one place where it's always there. It, it's gonna be easy once everybody gets used to it.
There's that old saying, riding the elephant, it won't bite whole time. That's all we had under oath. Okay, we'll move on to new business. Actually, we'll jump ahead to the board ad advertising. Oh, maybe we'll do the maintenance one first, since Steve's been waiting patiently.
I'm just, I'm just here to gain information.
Okay, well then, we'll, let's do the board opening, advertising then. The question's been brought up. Does the county want to advert, continue to advertise all our board openings? All our boards have their own budgets, their own personnel. You know, we still put them on our website and stuff, so we're actually doing their, their job, that board's work, you know, that's, that's, that's their responsibility as a board to advertise their openings. So.
I mean, we'll continue to put it on the door and on our website, but it's their job to go out and find someone who's in the board.
With that, that sounds like a good idea, but with that, will there be some agreement or written agreement that they, they need to advertise in paper or something? I mean, you can give them that suggestion, but that doesn't mean they're gonna do it, but should, should that be something we expect them to do?
Well, I'll send out a letter to all of them and let them know that the commissioners are no longer gonna advertise. I don't know why the county started advertising for all of them.
As a board member, that's their, that's part of their job responsibility. That, maybe some of the education that needs, you know, board education comes down with a period of time.
We have seen the boards, these boards, some of them have done very well, some of them have not done so well. And we, this board and past board has gotten into where you can't micromanage. But it is not micromanaging to hold the board accountable. And if they don't do those things, ultimately, we are in charge of those boards. So there has to be a, some type of stopgap or some type of checks and balances that if these things aren't, the education part honestly should come from us as well. Because a lot of times, hey, I know this guy Dave who says he wants to be on a board. Okay, you're on the board, Dave, and has no idea what that board does or what they're supposed to do with that board. And that is on us as commissioners to see to it that the boards are filled with people that know what they're. that know what they're supposed to do. Because if you put five people that don't know what they're supposed to do on a board, then they bring on somebody else and they didn't know what they were supposed to do, it's a, it's a mess. And that's why some of the boards have the problems that they do.
Well, you guys still have to appoint them. We just don't have to advertise with their...
But as far as our appointing, we should have some type of training to know. I've, I've heard multiple people go on boards and say, yeah, I was put on the board, but I really don't know what I'm supposed to do. Where does that come from if it doesn't come from us? So, I mean, advertising for the board, where's the stop, where's the stopgap that helps us help these boards when we have a fair board that comes in that's upset and we have a, the Mala board or whichever comes in and says, I need you guys to help this dispute. And we're like, wow, we don't want to interfere, but no, we don't. Ultimately, it comes back in our lap anyway.
And that's part of what I, I want to address is getting with the boards and coming up with some kind of actual job description as to what the board does and what their responsibilities are. I, I agree with him. You know, ultimately, it comes back to us. If, if they do something wrong, it's coming, it's going to come back to us because we're the ones that put those people on that board. And perhaps there should be a little bit more of a questionnaire and they, or an interview of some kind, even if there's only one person, we might need to look at something like that.
I'll come around the backside of that though. It's your personal responsibility if you're putting your name on a board, you should know what you're putting your name on. You usually ought to know what you're getting, somewhat getting yourself into before you throw your name in, be appointed to a board.
Right. And that's where we, we need some kind of, even maybe that board, say the fair board, for just an example, needs to come up with somewhat of a job description as to what their duties are and their responsibilities are. So those people understand before they, they put in for it.
I guess it's baffling to me that these board, if these, these people are getting put on boards and the other board members aren't assisting them to understand that. That's baffling that that's actually taking place, if that's true.
But we've seen personality conflicts within the boards. That's just...
But you're going to have that with Hannah?
Sure. But I mean, somehow we have to find a way to get over that.
Going back to our other question though, is it the county's responsibility to advertise for these boards?
I mean, this is a once a month thing that I pitched last year. You're talking $63 a month, what, $700 and some dollars a year? I think the bang for your buck is pretty good if you, otherwise you could have board members handpicking board members.
I kind of agree with it. You gotta, either way, we're paying for it, whether you've given them money to them and letting them use it. The only thing it would do is make life easy potentially on you if they were, if you let those boards advertise on their own. And, and even if we have to add that little bit to their, you know, a lot every year, so that we have to project so that that advertising can take place.
Well, like Pioneering Zone, they have, we don't give them money. And they have their own. I don't know. It was just corrupt management. Why are they...
So, to answer Kim's question, what are we going to do? Sixty, sixty dollars a month?
Sixty-three dollars.
Sixty-three dollars a month.
Can we redirect that through those boards, that you don't have to deal with anyone? I mean, you're still dealing with it, I guess, because you're going to have to...
They don't bring the applications here, probably.
Last year I got on your website, because I wasn't getting the information, I got on your website and just did the courthouse closure ads and the board openings. For a while, I wasn't getting the information, even though you voted to approve it and put it in our paper.
You weren't getting it out.
Well, because I didn't forget to give it to her. No big deal. It was a big deal, because you guys had approved it to go in our paper.
Well, and that's, there, there again. But if we're going to start something, we've got to finish it. What are we going to do, what are we going to do with this?
Well, I guess it's a good point that either way, we're paying for it. And if we continue to do it, we, we know it's getting done.
Know it's getting done.
And we have a better record of it. Correct?
We, uh, yeah, I mean, if we, if we allow them to do it and we give them a stipend or whatever, there's, some of them, if they are folding, it's going to be sitting on the money for that anyways. Yeah.
Well, if you break sixty dollars a month over how many boards we advertise, you know, we actually got, that's what. Six dollars a month if it's 10 boards, which is...
Usually it's only these three, four that we now, now have one. The creditor always has that one. And then Pioneering Zone right now has three.
But Nathan's case of maybe taking it off you, even if we are advertising for them, can't we can, you know, start educating them that they need to start doing some of that process for them instead of you doing it?
And also, in their advantage, it actually puts our courthouse closures on there too.
Well, I actually asked for help wanted ads and special meeting notices also last year.
Those, that all count grabbed with that sixty dollars a month?
No. That's just your board that they're at. But you spent $2,100. I mean, actually you spent $4,421. But if you take the delinquent tax sale notice off that you always advertise with this, the cost of those ads I asked for last year was $2,100. And I just want to say I'm here more for the citizens than I am for how much money this is putting in the newsletter. And you actually thanked me last year for bringing this to your attention.
Oh, I remember. It's last year. I didn't promise any of them to expect any money on last year.
That's, what's the red, Becky?
Uh, that's the one.
That's the tax sale one.
Which one's higher than this one? It's our security.
No, this one's, um...
That's a good one.
Yeah.
This is nuclear.
Right, I'm just looking at...
This was the, um...
Do you have the tax sale? I know that comes up.
This was the total amount per thing here. And this was just...
That's the tax sale. See if you take here the tax sale one. Oh, that, that's the difference between those two.
So we proceed and we have intended to proceed last year. So I don't know, is anything being a motion? Soon we made motion last year.
Yeah, we did.
I make motion that we continue to advertise in newsletter journal. The board positions,
Tax sale.
Tax sale. And what else? Employ, open, open position, help wanted.
Courthouse closure.
Courthouse closings.
Special meeting.
The things that we've, we've done before.
And you probably should do special meeting.
And do what? I'm sorry.
Special meeting.
Special meetings.
Can you get all that?
You gotcha. Thank you.
I second that motion.
We have a motion, proper seconds to advertise in the newsletter journal with the aforementioned ads.
I'll go to tape.
Any other discussion? Hearing that, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay. All for carry. Okay, next up is maintenance position advertising.
So Steve and I were talking and we feel that we may get better, have better luck with the maintenance position if we cut a price in advertisement.
So wage? I would personally like to see the, like, the wage, like they used to when they had the openings here, bottom to top. And also the job description in the paper, instead of going to the website. There are people, and I'm one of them, that, you know, if I see it in the, you know, in the paper or, you know, drawing down the street, I think, I really feel that you're going to get a bigger pull. The, the money deal, I've had individuals come up to me and, you know, some of them are really shy and they don't want to, and I guess I was the same way. I was uncomfortable, you know, show up here and the money's not what they expect and are so nervous sitting here. If they could see the money, the wage deal, say, man, I could work for that. I'm willing to give them an, you know, an application and sit in front of them and discuss it. Where, in my opinion, you could be losing some people, not, you know, just, by, you know, not giving the wage top and bottom. I mean, I know when I took the job years ago, that's how, that's how I felt.
You know, I guess if, you know, the, on wages, we put the, the top and bottom in and then they're interested, then we just, then they can discuss, you know, do we, where do they feel they need to come in at? Do they feel, you know, I don't, I know zero or I need to come to the bottom or hey, I'm, I've, I've got all this knowledge and I need coming up here. You know, that's, do that during the interview.
Yeah, I mean, but if they had something to go by, by seeing, I mean, like when I did, I had no problem starting at the bottom because I, I, I say I know a lot now, but I'm saying I think that would, I think that would improve your chances. I know that, I know a couple of people that if I, if I knew what they, you know, your scale was, I think I could, I'd like to visit with them, you know, because they're the same as I was. They really, they don't, they're the best of people, best of workers. Things like this, you know, over time now, they could come in and sit down and explain, you know, what they think needs to be done.
What is our wages on that?
Maintenance, we have no idea. When Al was here, I looked it up, he was in $21.56 an hour, which was $3,450 a month.
If you advertise, that is at the bottom end. You know, what's, where are we at on the top end of it, if we were there?
I don't know because, I mean, what Steve's making now is probably...
But you can't, you can't look at me now.
Yeah, because he's not getting any benefits. So...
You know.
What's the, what's our top lead answer?
I think some of them guys are like twenty... I don't think we have a waiver.
I don't know, but...
Oh, twenty-five.
A lot of them have been here. Well, I mean, that's why they're...
I'm cautious. Maybe we find out what that wage is and stay under it. And, because I could see that cousins are...
There was a $400 difference when I started, from the bottom to the top. I know it's different now, but, I mean, because I don't, what you, you know, if a person knew that he would start, say, like the last one, $21, $22 an hour, and have a chance on getting up to the top, where I never was. I was never, I, only time I, I mean, I got raises when everybody else did. But I got $400 a month extra when they took on the team. But I never got a step up the whole six, six and a half years I was here.
So at 400 more a month, that would put him at 24.06 an hour.
You could get somebody pretty good.
My opinion.
You know, and if somebody seriously looked at it with the, at the $21.50 an hour, and then they figure a benefit package in.
Oh, I agree.
That, that would, that would really open their eyes.
A lot of people now that I've talked to, and I don't think it's, I don't agree on this, but you have a lot of people out there now, look at the bottom dollar. I mean, because they're used to working for X amount of dollars. They don't realize how good a benefit package this is. But they are set, that they've got to have X amount of dollars to, to make it. I mean, but if a person could visit, if you get the people and visit with them, say, hey, six, I don't know what it is for the rest of these employees for a step up, but say X amount of time, and you prove yourself, we're going to give you, we're going to give you a step, you know, up. And I think you'll have a lot, lot better luck, you know, you're going to get somebody that's going to stay and do a good job. On my, just when I talk to people, it's ask me, you know?
I, I agree with Steve. I think the wage scale, we should talk about it and put that on there. Because if you're, if you're working somewhere else and you see, if you see the ad and you see the wage, it's, it's going to get their interest in it. Then talk about, you know, full benefits too.
Yeah. If somebody working at 23 bucks an hour with no benefits, they're like, oh, we can come in at 21.50 an hour, we got the benefits.
You need benefits and retirement and everything.
Weekend off. Sarah Schiff worked there.
I think, I think a fair wage is 22. And you, you work them and see if, I mean, and I'm not, you know, I know that seems like a lot of money, but I think you're going to get the right person in there at 22 to start with and watch them. And, I mean, and like you guys all know, there's, there's a lot of responsibility, really, there is. I mean, to keep smiling is a bit, that's one of the tough ones. But it can be, it's, I tell everybody it's enjoyable.
We got some, somebody on and you're still around for him on YouTube. He'd probably come back to us and tell us, say, hey, this guy's going to be air gal, whatever.
Well, I can, I can see.
At least we have someone in mind.
So the guidance that you're looking for here is, do we, you just want authority to advertise?
A wage. And then Steve suggested put the...
Job description.
Part, yeah. I mean, the job description is huge. So I'm not going to put the whole job description in.
Just condense it down to a fair amount.
General, you know.
General maintenance of county buildings.
To a certain point, it would snort in there, but we'll train. You know, that, that could ease a person's mind.
There will be training for a couple of months. You're not, you're not just going to have to wing it like Steve.
I'd say, so, so do we, the, we need to nail down another?
So do I need, do we, do we put a range 20, between 22 and?
I would keep that.
Or do I just put starting, starting wage, $22 an hour?
No, I think you need to put a range.
Yeah. Why not like 20 to 23 dollars an hour and then you're...
Start a pick. Start a pay.
Yeah.
Then after, if you get to be a visitor with them. And it's a qualified to be more, you know, or you can tell by it, but like, can you, because they hired me first.
Starting pay, starting pay twenty to twenty-three dollars depending on experience.
Depending on the sponsor. Does it, and, and just save, um, health benefits and...
Plus benefits.
Full, or full benefits or something.
Full county benefits.
When do their benefits start? Day they're hired or do they have a...
So the vacation doesn't start for a year. Insurance goes into effect sixty days from the starting date.
Sixty days after the first month you're hired.
Yeah, so it could vary.
About...
It's best to start on the first of the month, because then it's only sixty day waiting period. Um, but like your sick time and stuff starts right away, stuff like that, but...
And just so, I mean, I don't, you were on the hard board work when I got hired, were you here? Just so you guys thought that, when I got hired, they sat there and said, now this is a Monday through Friday, eight to four, eight to five job. It's, there's, there's no way that's, you know, just so you don't, you know, say that, because that's the farthest from the truth.
It's a four to two, eight to five, who would just, you never know.
Just whatever it takes.
Dictates.
Is it normally about forty hours, though?
Oh, yeah.
At least, at least. Sometimes we have to call them and say, there's a clunky noise somewhere.
Can I ask one more question? There was times, there was times when you guys over the period of time have talked about comp time versus overtime. Has anybody put any thought into that? I mean, it's something that...
It all depends on how you hire them. If you hire them hourly, they get overtime pay. If they're salary, they're comp time. So it's all, it all depends on how they're hired.
I mean, is, can that be, can that, is that an option? Will you interview somebody to talk to them and say, or are you gonna set the, set it straight to, well, this is...
Well, the position's always been salary.
Either salary. I, I get comp time, but I see a lot of places where comp time gets abused severely.
What was their salary?
You know, I've seen people that come in on a Saturday and do nothing.
Yep.
And get, put eight, sit there and do nothing for eight hours and get twelve hours of comp time coming off.
I see people do that, getting paid by the hour.
Yeah.
It all, it all depends on the person, and when you guys talk to them, you'll know. I mean, my, my preference was the comp time. I mean, because you get your work done in the summer, or if you gotta go here or there, you don't have to take a day of vacation. You, you know, yeah, I ended up with a whole bunch of comp time. And I don't feel that I've used it when I was here.
No.
I mean...
You didn't, but there were some that, and my feeling on comp time is, you put a limit on how much you can get. Because that's, I've seen some of them that so much comp time accrued, and then when they quit, they get paid out of it all at once.
Well, and I understand there...
And that puts a strain on your budgets.
Exactly. But then is that, you do something like that, and where does that go in the middle of the winter? When you gotta keep the outside, you know, maintained, um...
Well, in the handbook, it says you have, you have to use it within so many months of the career.
I mean, it just things you guys can think about. If, if you do against somebody, there's a lot of different, like I say, when it happened to me, it was eight to five. That lasted, I think, four days.
Well, I mean, that's something, we as a board know it's, that, it can't, it's not an eight to five job and that's, you know.
And you get for finding a person...
They're not gonna abuse the system.
So...
I don't know, we're so glad to have you back.
Who are we paying, salary or hourly?
When he was here before, when Al was here, it was salary.
How are we talking on hourly wage then?
Because I was just letting you know, that's, that's how you figure out.
So the...
So I, I can figure it out.
Salary job.
Yeah, I can, I can put in there.
Just based on what's in twenty...
I can say the salary based pay between this and this per month.
So then they'll be able to get comped.
I'll just, that's how I'll advertise it then. Instead of the twenty-two, twenty to twenty-three, I'll do it the salary.
Times forty hours, that's your monthly salary.
Times a hundred and sixty. How you do it. So it would be...
Put a condensed job description and then the salary range.
So between thirty-two hundred and... Three thousand, six hundred and eighty.
Starting.
Plus benefits, depending on experience.
Where that's from.
I'm thinking.
Get your resume.
Follow Steve around.
He'll have to be down here by three o'clock in the morning to get this, sidewalk shovel by Steve.
Try to play it for my watch.
No.
Did go and put in for it, see what happens to it.
Thanks, Steve.
Okay, thanks. We'll work on it condensed.
Are you guys done?
We gotta go to...
We got one more thing. We all done a credit card and then with that.
Okay, well, just before, I'd like to talk to you, you guys are going on a tour. I just got a few things that I'd like to bring up, you know, but if that's all right. When you're done, when you're done, before you leave, I still didn't get the door, I was gonna go take the door off, then like this one.
Before we leave, like, for the day or...
Before you go touring.
Oh, okay.
Because it's just something, it's...
I just stay right there then, because...
Yeah, stay right there.
So, this was the preauthorization for the, um, public health, for Michelle to do her recertification, her class. I just needed you guys to open it up. She used her credit card.
Oh.
For public health.
Should all that get worked out?
Yeah, yeah.
I was trying to pass all the back and forth.
Yes, we got it all matched up.
Yeah, actually, it was on our consent agenda too, so we already did earlier.
Well, I put it through with the consent agenda, so...
Okay. Okay, we will, and we all need to come for the, through this board. We will in turn go through our walkie tours. Remember, when we're done with our walkie tours, we need to be back here and take care of two, solve these items.
You're leaving?
Uh, never mind.